Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. First, we're going to have the pledge and invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that you stand, if you're able to, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county this morning. As always, I pray for all of those members of our armed forces and first responders in our own community and beyond. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And with that, if we could have a roll call?
Good morning, Kemp.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
White.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you. We will present one recognition today. The recipient is joining the meeting virtually. The recognition will be presented by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Is Lady Avery Gail Williams here today?
Yes, I believe Ms. Williams is on. Ms. Williams, can you hear us?
I do, but there's a lot of buffering that keeps happening.
We are getting your audio and video.
Very well.
We cannot hear you, ma'am. I welcome you as we honor a man who has accomplished so much for Hillsborough County and his parishioners at the Brown Temple Church of God in Christ. Bishop Matthews Williams dedicated his life to serving others and helping his community thrive. His contributions with the church are numerous, including delivering hot meals to the homeless, visiting the incarcerated to provide inspiration, guidance, and hope, and better the lives of local children, just to name a few. Although he will be missed, his community will always cherish his hard work and achievements. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I present this memoriam celebrating the life of Bishop Matthews Williams. It reads, "Whereas the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners recognizes individuals whose commitment and dedication have made a lasting impact on the community and its residents, and one such person is the Bishop Matthews Williams, former pastor of Brown Memorial Church of God in Christ, who passed away on November 27, 2020, and whereas the son of the late Elder Matthew Senior and Louise Williams. Bishop Williams was born on March 13, 1956, in Lakeland, Florida, and whereas after graduating from Brandon High School in 1975, he worked in bush gardens while training to become a minister at Brown Memorial Church of God in Christ. And whereas Bishop Williams' unwavering commitment to his calling and his community led him to rise through the ranks of deacon, licensed minister, and elder until he became a full-time pastor of Brown Memorial Church of God in Christ in 1989. And whereas since his consecration as bishop of southwestern Florida's jurisdiction in 1998, he served the greater Tampa Bay area with numerous acts of charity, including purchasing school supplies for children of the church and the community, providing hundreds of local families in need with food and clothing, and personally leading mission work to ministry to the homeless in Tampa Bay. And whereas, in addition, Bishop Williams dedicated his time, guidance, and wisdom to local clergy at the Tampa Bay Coalition of Clergy, where he served as a mentor and advisor to young ministers and elders throughout the region. And whereas during the 109th Annual Holy Convocation in St. Louis in 2016, Bishop Williams received a momentous honor when he was elected as One of Church of God in Christ's newest member of its general board, the highest executive and administrative board within the church, consisting of 12 elected bishops, including the presiding bishop. And whereas in 2018, Bishop Williams was awarded as an honorary doctor of divinity from St. Thomas Christian College in Jacksonville, Florida, a testament of his hard work and devotion to his church, parishioners, and community. And whereas although the loss of this outstanding man is difficult to bear, his legacy live on through the improvements he's made to the community, in the way he influenced others to make a difference, and in all those whose lives he touched. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby urge all residents to join in expressing both sorrow and appreciation to his wife, First Lady Avery Gail, three sister-in-laws, one brother-in-law, numerous cousins, two godbrothers, and a host of extended family members, spiritual sons and daughters, his local church, the jurisdiction, and the National Church of God in Christ Incorporated. This board's hope: They take solace in many cherished memories and positive impacts Bishop Matthews Williams made during his lifetime, executed this 21st day of January 2021, signed by all seven commissioners. At this time, would Lady A. would you like to give a few remarks?
Ms. Williams, would you like to give remarks? Ms. Williams, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now.
Okay. Would you like to give remarks?
I apologize. It was a lot of buffering on this side, so I wasn't able to keep up with you all. Yes?
You can feel free to give remarks. If you'd like, you could turn off your camera, and that should help with the buffering.
Thank you. On behalf of my daughter Denise and myself, I humbly accept this memoriam given to honor the life and work of my husband, Bishop Matthew Williams, in the Tampa area. As the pastor of Brown Temple, he taught the Bible lessons of love and righteousness in word and deed. He stressed that you will reap what you sow, therefore, treat people like you want to be treated. He was a man of service, and he taught others to serve, not just to receive honor from men, but just because it is Christians. The people who heard and received his biblical teachings on love, righteousness, and service will continue to show the love of God and his righteousness and serve others as they are instructed to do so. I thank you again, parishioners, for this honor towards my husband. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams, for joining us today. Did you have any further remarks, Commissioner Myers?
Yes. I personally want to express my deepest condolences to you and your family. Hillsborough County appreciates everything that Bishop has done for our community. So I would just like to say, Lady A., I had the opportunity to visit the church, I want to say, in 2018, when Elder Norman Harris preached the anniversary at the church for the bishop, and I had the opportunity to meet both of you all. And I think of the legacy that Bishop leaves, and now he's resting in the bosom of our Lord Jesus Christ and Savior. So thank you for all that he has done to help our community, and may God bless you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. I want to thank Mrs. Williams for joining us today. We are sorry for your loss. Ms. Williams, and the bishop's legacy sounds like a really rich legacy, a loving, generous, and a caring person that I'm sure lifted a lot of lives here in Hillsborough County. So thank you for that proclamation this morning. We'll move now to Ms. Wise with the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At 9:45, we have Item E1, which is to receive a special appearance by Cindy Stewart, clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller. Item D1 at 10:00 a.m. is to conduct a public hearing as required by the J&amp;K Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program to consider granting a conservation easement to the EPC for the bomb scrub addition elapsed site and to approve that conservation easement. Item D2 at 10:00 a.m. is to conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Polte Homes Company, LLC. Item D3 is to conduct a first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Franklin Development Corporation. Item E2 at 10:15 is the emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. This is related to Item B4. And then Item B4, also at 10:15, is the agreement with CDR McGuire for urgent vaccination appointment scheduling, testing, and related services. Item F2 at 10:45 is Commissioner Kemp's item, which is to receive a presentation on the county's LEED Design for Cities and Communities Platinum Award from USGBC, which is the U.S. Green Building Council, major sustainability initiatives by staff, and next step with sustainability planning. I apologize for that stumble. And those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no discussion, can you please take a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I'm carried seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move now to public comments. Looks like we have a number of people this morning. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the board may hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing an online public comment form found at hillsboroughcounty.org backslash or forward slash speakup. You will be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The chair will call in speakers by name in order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it's received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. And with that, I will go to the first speaker on the agenda. Bella Elwell is... Is Elwell there?
Hello? Hi. My name is Bella Elwell, and I'm a 20-year-old college student from Hillsborough County. I'm calling about the amendment to expand the mask mandate to outdoor wearing as well. Regarding the effectiveness of masks, which has yet to be established confidently, it's not for the Board of County Commissioners to force citizens or to punish businesses to, quote, "protect us from ourselves." We're cognitive adults, and we don't need to be told to wash our hands and cover our mouths when we cough under government threat. We do not support the standing mask mandate, as the science does not support the idea that it slows the spread, and we do not support the amendment to expand this mandate. There is no constitutionally delegated authority to the Board of County Commissioners to continue this mask mandate. It is not supported by the will of the people who employ you, and not only are you not listening to us in Hillsborough County, but you're not listening to the people in other states. If you were, you would know they're coming here as a safe haven from the totalitarian governments from which they fled. How many more times must we call and email before you start to listen to us? Thank you.
And we have Michael Newitt next. Mr. Newitt?
Madam Chair, he is not on the call.
Okay. We'll move next to Gerald White. Mr. White?
Good morning, Commissioners. Gerald White, Hillsborough County, community activist. I'm here this morning on Agenda Item B2. But before I speak on that, I wanted to thank the county administrator, Bonnie Wise, and her team for the work that they've done related to the COVID vaccine. I did read the extensive report in the backup on your county agenda, and I just wanted to thank them for the work and working through all the challenges related to that. This is a tough area, trying to get the vaccine here in Hillsborough County, and as a citizen, I recognize that. So I just want to say thanks and that all of her team just keep up the great work trying to provide for the citizens of Hillsborough County. But Agenda Item B2, related to redistricting, I just wanted the board to... This is a new board, so make sure you concentrate on this new section that was placed in the Charter 4.03. You know, a few years ago, several years ago, redistricting was drawn on a kitchen table and brought to the board, and it passed. So just make sure we have absolute, open, transparent communication with the public with redistricting, broad communication throughout this county. I think we're at 1.4 million. I mean, we're really getting up there inside, even considering even expanding this single-member district. I'm looking forward to as a citizen participating and coming to the hearings. But as a new board, just make sure you really get fully knowledge about the process, how it works, what role you play as a commissioner. Mary Helen Ferris, expert in this area, she's worked on redistricting for many years. Christine Beck, also a county attorney, has broad experience in this area. So just make sure you use all your resources and any new tools out there related to redistricting. This is very important to the African-American community. So we're counting on you guys as a board to really do right for the people of Hillsborough County related to redistricting. And I just want to encourage all the citizens, once this process starts, to stay tuned, get involved, and speak out related to redistricting, because we definitely want to maintain a minority-majority district in Hillsborough County. Thank you for hearing my concerns today, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. White. We'll now move to Vivian Kuntz.
Good morning, board members. My name is Vivian Kuntz, and I am a Florida resident calling from overseas. And I would like to take this opportunity to address one of the agenda items listed under List of Items Scheduled for Another Time, more specifically, the agenda item listed as B-4 or B-04. This agenda item revolves around the topic of the Office of Emergency Management working together with CDR McGuire Incorporated to provide services in relation to vaccine rollout in Florida. According to the Office of Emergency Management, it was determined that additional funds of over $1 million are required on top of the original amount given earlier this month. To add, the agency further described that an additional three months of service will be needed, which will cost up to over $21 million for the community. Previously, a different provider offered services in relation to the vaccine rollout. However, it was canceled in the last month. The claim made for the transition is that CDR McGuire is more capable of providing services on a larger scale and has a higher level of customer service when dealing with the pandemic. Due to the size of the pandemic, the reason for the transition to a new provider is an understood action made by the Office of Emergency Management. However, I believe that there may be an issue of whether this new provider will be able to handle this case. There are many stakeholders that will be affected by this particular agenda, such as the Office of Emergency Management, of course, CDR McGuire Incorporated, the health industry professionals working in the health field in Florida, the general public, and many more. Because this agenda would impact so many people and industries, it's critical to conduct further research into this new service provider and budget estimations to make sure that the funding needed is the funding that will be used, especially in these pandemic times. Money is precious. While the cost of this agenda may lead off into millions and may sound expensive, I've been informed that in research that population size, infection rates, those most vulnerable, and the still ongoing viruses that affect the cost of vaccination services... affects the cost of vaccination services, excuse me. Therefore, when looking at the funding amounts for the services within this agenda, the costs of their service do add up appropriately. Additionally, I've had associates and feedback comments from those in the health field tell me that while it's true that money shouldn't be spent recklessly, the health, safety, and general well-being of the public should hold priority over money costs, because a citizen's life is worth more than anything. Therefore, I recommend that the board give this agenda careful consideration into the service provider, CDR McGuire Incorporated, and acknowledge that this agenda would definitely help improve and save lives. Thank you for allowing me to be here and let my opinion and voice be heard. I appreciate your consideration and time.
Thank you, Ms. Kuntz. Christopher Vella? Vella?
Commissioner, he is not on the line.
Oh, okay. Noel Lacor. Ms. Lacor?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Noel Lacor. I just want to quickly say that I support Agenda Item F1, to bring back the ferry proposal. But I'm here this morning because I have some concerns that I would like to share with you all. The county is handing out permits like candy through a program called Alternative Residential New Construction Permit Process Pilot Program, with turnarounds in as little as 11 business days. This sounds like a nice program, but is this the right time for such a program like that? It's like the county doesn't even care that our infrastructure is seriously lacking. Where are the timing mechanisms to ensure that sufficient infrastructure exists prior to residential construction, or at least shortly after, for certain types of infrastructure? Someone needs to look closely at the way permits are being approved, because it's things like it's all about getting out as many permits as possible and has very little to do with the right timing. Stop me if you've heard this before. We need about 30 fire stations right now, with the biggest need being in South Hillsborough County. We are quickly running out of water, especially in South Hillsborough County. Our roads are substandard, and many are dangerous. We have already lost safe school bus transportation for over 7,500 students, putting many children in danger on their way to and from school. We need 31 new schools in the next 15 years in South Hillsborough County alone. This is all a direct result of urban sprawl and irresponsible and reckless development. It is severely affecting our quality of life, and it's only going to get worse, because the county keeps digging a deeper hole every single day. Maybe it's time for some sort of moratorium for South Hillsborough County, or are we just going to wait until we run out of water, until fire and rescue time become 20-plus minutes and people start dying, or until schools are back on double sessions, or until it takes two hours to get from South Hillsborough County to Tampa? Another concern I have is conflicts of interest hiding within our county government, especially when it comes to land use and rezonies, which have had a substantial impact on the mess in South Hillsborough County. Land use hearing Officer James Scroll was allowed to preside over many rezoning requests that involve the same developers who he does business with through at least one of his companies. He may be gone now, but someone needs to answer for this, and something needs to be put in place ASAP that ensures that hearing officers are not presiding over and rendering recommendations for cases that involve companies who they exchange money for services with. Thank you for your time.
And we will move to Thomas DeGeorge.
Yes, thank you for having me today. I wanted to talk about coronavirus enforcement. I am the owner of Crowbar in Ebor City, which is a 300-capacity venue. Crowbar opened in 2006 and has hosted thousands of bands from all over the country and all over the world. And in 2019 alone, we hosted over 300 touring concerts. These events stimulate the economy, because people plan their weekends around them. They go to dinner, and then they go to the show, and then they have drinks afterwards, and then they go to a hotel, and they stay at the hotel, and in the morning, they get up and they have breakfast somewhere, and then they go shopping. So studies show that for every dollar spent on a concert ticket at my establishment is $12 spent around my community, and you can't route national tours without a national plan. So experts predict that we won't see true normalcy until fall of 2021 at the earliest, and that, of course, depends on how far along we are with this pandemic. It doesn't just affect the small stages. It will affect our performing arts centers, our theaters, our festivals. So this, of course, is also crippling to tourism. So in the meantime, with no other choice, I've turned my space into a seated listening room that's operating at 25% capacity, so local artists can continue to perform and prosper. Two months ago, I formed the Safe and Sound Initiative. It is county and city-supported. It started with seven businesses, myself, The Independent, The Hub, New World Brewery, Ellis, Hooch and Hive, and Shuffle, and we are now up to 700 members in just two months. 70 of those are well-respected brick-and-mortar establishments, and the rest are people who want to go out, but they're looking for safe alternatives to know that they're not going to bring home a virus to compromise loved ones, or they're not going to put themselves at risk. It's also artists and musicians that want to work that are looking for safe places to play. So neglecting to embrace a safe and sound environment ostracizes a large component of our populace. This demographic spends money, and they want to feel safer, also stay at home. So I would argue that the problem is not enforcement, compliance, and subsequent punishment for people that are holding super-sweater events, but I think the problem is the lack thereof. Businesses operating responsibly, especially in commercial districts, interrupt business for other venues opting to operate responsibly. So we must close any loopholes that are allowing bars and nightclubs to host super-sweater events that not only terrorize and impact their neighbors, but our doctors, nurses, and first responders. We also must regulate the capacity of districts that have the potential to become horribly overcrowded during the pandemic. It is a health nightmare and also correlates with crime. In Ebor, we had a disastrous Halloween and New Year's Eve, and Super Bowl is right around the corner, and I have been asking what we're going to do about Super Bowl. We can't have overcrowding that causes seas of people on the streets. It's not fair or safe to a door guy or a hostess that's sitting up there by themselves to try to deal with that sort of insanity.
Mr. DeGeorge, thank you so much. I appreciate it, and I know that I've heard that Crowbar is doing a wonderful job both in educating the community, other clubs and bar owners, and taking very responsible measures for Crowbar. So thank you for speaking this morning. We'll recognize Marissa Lopez. Is Ms. Lopez here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I wanted to discuss the mask mandate today, the extension for it. I wanted to remind everybody about the ADA requirements for health conditions. On the executive order, there's a exemption for pre-existing health conditions. However, when we go to businesses around Hillsborough County, they don't seem to care. It's just posted on the door that you're not allowed in without a mask. A mask must be worn, and if you go in without one, they tell us you need to put one on right away. The ADA, they just... They're not... I don't know if they're not aware of it, or they're not being in compliance with it, but they don't allow you in without putting on a mask. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And also, in regards to the Hillsborough County libraries, I've noticed multiple libraries have different requirements now. Some of them have a one-hour requirement, where you can't be in there longer than an hour. You have to get a temperature screening and everything when you go in. They have taken out all of the tables... They have taken out all of the tables and chairs, so you can't bring your laptop in anymore. It's almost like it's difficult to go in, and I know that when libraries were first established back in history, they were, you know, for the purpose of everybody being able to access resources that they wouldn't normally be able to access. And right now, it's kind of like those are being blocked. They used to be freely accessible to everyone, and now it's difficult. I've heard from many of my friends that they're not able to get in, and it's just unfortunate. I don't think it should be that way. So I was hoping everyone could maybe do something about that. And also, the issues with the mask mandate inside, you know, are separate. I know you guys are voting on adding it to outdoors. I don't really see what the point of that is if everyone's socially distanced and the wind is blowing and everything like that. And especially at the upcoming Super Bowl, I think that would be difficult for everybody to be wearing a mask. And, you know, I think it should be by choice. If people want to wear a mask, then they can. If they don't want to wear a mask, then they don't have to. If someone is wearing a mask, it should be protecting themselves from anybody else that's not wearing a mask. So, you know, like a caller said before, you know, I think it's personal choice. We're all adults. If we want to wear one, if someone is too scared to go outside because other people aren't wearing a mask, they have the freedom to stay home. I mean, it's a free country. So I just hope everybody takes all these things into consideration. Thank you.
Now, I think we missed, I guess we just missed Mr. Newitt. And no other speakers. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Cohen and Myers. Can we have a roll call, please?
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And we're at the regular, the regular agenda now. And Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we get started, I just wanted to mention that we have some technical difficulties going on for those of you who are in the room who are using iPads, I believe. I think that your raise the hand function might not be working. If you're using a laptop, it might be okay. Can you all check that? And we can do a little test if we could. If not, we will have to motion to the chair otherwise to get in the queue for raising the hand.
So I guess everybody's going to try their hand function.
If you could all please check, please.
Yes, I can see it on the...
Madam Chair, I have my laptop in here. I'm going to try it through the laptop. It shows it's raised on my end.
Mine doesn't work on the iPad, and I'm not using the laptop, so I...
Okay, everybody's just going to have to knock on the plexiglass.
Okay.
I'll knock on the glass.
You'll just have to be patient with me if I don't see you right away.
All right. We are working on that, the issues with technology. All righty, it is a little bit before 9:45, but I know that Ms. Stewart is available. If you all would waive your rules so we could hear from our new clerk.
Move to waive the rules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to waive the rules by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Can we have a roll call?
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan. Myers.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Our Item E1 is to receive a special appearance by Cindy Stewart, Clerk of Court and Comptroller. And Ms. Stewart is on the line. Our new clerk is here to present.
Welcome.
Good morning, and thank you, Ms. Wise, and thank you, Commissioner Kemp, Chair Kemp, for allowing me to have a little bit of time with you this morning. Greetings from the 13th floor. It's good to see all of you online, and I know some of you are in the building this morning, the very quiet building of the county center. My office is open, and we have remained open throughout the pandemic, but I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to introduce myself to those of you who don't know me and to those of you who know, don't know that I am new to this office. I'm very excited to be here. We are in week number two of my team being on board. And I know that a lot of our core, part of our job and our function on the 13th floor impacts your offices and your work as we pay a majority of the county's bills, auditor books, and even deliver mail. We take minutes for your meetings, preside over your meetings, and preserve everything to make sure that the records are kept around what's happening. For many years, I have an employee, Julia Purport, who served as Chief Deputy of Records in her capacity. She's retiring at the end of this month, and I wanted to make sure that you all know that I have promoted from within Siobhan Spencer to take Julia's position effective yesterday. Julie, Siobhan's been with the office for 35 years, and I'm confident that her experience and knowledge will serve me well in my first year in office. So I'm excited about her announcement. She joins my executive team this week, as I said. I plan on spending my first 90 days in this office, listening and learning from the staff that are here. Ms. Frank did an amazing job for the last 16 years, and I am very fortunate to have had her support as I take over. She has allowed for an extremely smooth transition in this office. She had extremely ambitious goals of preparing a paperless office and succeeded in making sure that that happened, and I plan to continue to build on that foundation. I have my own goals, obviously, for this office, allowing customers to do the majority of their business remotely. A lot of that has taken place already, as you've seen. Majority of my office is working from home. Our customer call center is completely at home and working offline. We have courts happening via Teams. Jury services has been revamped so that we are practicing social distancing and making sure that we are keeping the public safe. And I intend to make sure that some of these services stay intact so that customers out in the community can continue to do business with our offices remotely. Had a lot of time and energy to build strong relationships, and I plan to continue that work with the community, with our legislative body and the local electeds here. I brought on some staff to help me do that. We, this office has never had truly a government relations arm, and so I have brought on an individual who will work specifically with the elected body of this community as well as that of the state to make sure that the clerk's offices are, and our voice is heard in Tallahassee. I intend to continue to work with the support of all of you, the county administrator, State's Attorney's Office, Andrew Warren, Public Defender, Chief Judge Picoletto, and the sheriff and the tax collector, as well as Bob Henriquez, and the supervisor of elections, to make sure that we're doing everything that we can for this community out of our offices and make it as seamless as possible. My new goal for this office will be find a way to get to yes. There are ways for us to do things better. You all know me pretty well. I have an open-door policy. If you have any questions or concerns out of my office, please do not hesitate to call me or stop by. I appreciate your time and your service to this community.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Thank you, and all good luck in your future with, we'll have a lot of contact with you in the future. Thank you. And we'll move now back to Ms. Wise with the regular agenda.
Thank you. We have some time before 10 o'clock so we can move to our regular agenda. The first item is Item B1, which is approving a resolution with the Housing Finance Authority for additional multifamily units. And Mary Helen Ferris from the County Attorney's Office will present this item.
Morning, Commissioners. Mary Helen Ferris with the County Attorney's Office. This is another Housing Finance Authority bond issuance. There's no county funds involved, and not to exceed $11 million. The borrower is UACDC. You might be familiar with them. And this will be located on 12th Street and Fletcher Avenue in the USF area. It will have 87 multifamily rental units for income-eligible persons, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Seeing Commissioner Overman, I'd seen your hand up before. I didn't know if it was left there. I don't see any other, just any other...
It was up for the last item, but while I'm now being seen, awesome. I'm so glad to see this come forward. Everything we can do to get more affordable housing on deck is critically important, so I appreciate the support of this item. I'll stop there.
I'm excited to see this in particular at the university area on our agenda to move forward. So this is all good news. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is that Commissioner Myers?
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, seeing no further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving right along, Ms. Wise.
The next item is Item B2, which is regarding the redistricting project plan for 2021, and Mary Helen Ferris will present this item as well.
Thank you. This is just an initial report regarding the upcoming redistricting process. Really, what this item is asking is that the board to direct the county attorney and the county administrator to come back with a full project redistricting plan. I've attached in the background what we did in 2011. So this is just the first step. We're still unclear now as to when we might get the certified numbers. Once we do, the start, the clock starts ticking. So we wanted to be ready to go as soon as we get those numbers. So the next step would be for us to bring back a redistricting plan with the staff, and we'll take board direction.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cohen.
Just a quick question. My understanding is that the census has been delayed some due to COVID. How does that affect the calendar in terms of redistricting?
I talked to Brandon Wagner yesterday on this issue, and we are monitoring when we expect those to be in. I believe it might be the end of March. In the past, the numbers were due to the states by April 1st. They usually roll out about six weeks ahead of time. So the last two redistrictings that we did, we got the numbers in March, but we're monitoring that. We don't know exactly at this point when those numbers might be certified.
Thank you. Commissioner White.
So do you need guidance today, or are you looking for guidance at some point in the future with respect to, for example, who will draw the proposed maps?
Today, what we were just asking, just to put this on your radar that it's coming, we will bring back the redistricting project plan that will have those details in it, and we'll take board direction as to those details. The last two redistrictings, the maps were drawn initially by staff, and then we had numerous meetings throughout the county, and additional maps were drawn based on citizen input. So if the board wants to proceed in the way that we have in the past, that's fine. If you want to change the process, we can do that as well.
I think it's, if I still have the floor, Madam Chair. I think it's best just to bring the process as it's been done in the past to the board, and then at that time, if the board wants to analyze it and make any sorts of tweaks or changes, we could do it at that time.
Are there any other questions? I just wondered, I looked through the 2011 process a bit, and I know there's, I know you just put that in there as an idea to give us a framework for what's happened in the past. Of course, there were some things in there that are no longer the law. Or I would be curious in particular of understanding exactly what the requirements are under the law, you know, anything beyond making the districts equal in size. And I guess under state law, it's now compactness and a few others. But I'd be interested in seeing exactly what, I know when you bring it back, I'm assuming you'll bring it back as that, but I'd like to just be clear that I'd like to know exactly what is required and what is perhaps, you know, if there's some interest at that time, what is desired. And seeing any, anyone else. And we, I guess we don't know in terms of the particulars at this time, kind of, I know I had already people curious about the software and things like that, but I guess we're going to learn that in the future.
I have a question.
I have a question for Mary Helen, but I don't know if you have that answer.
Regarding the software that we will use, I don't, at this point, I would have to get with the county staff and see because that information probably is dated as to what we have now, but we would definitely bring all that information back to the board.
Thank you. And Ms., Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. Ms. Ferris, I don't know, I know that part of the reason there may be somewhat of a delay this year has to do with COVID and the census and the data that's come in. And certification is critically important, but also there was some question about how the census was being managed and what questions were being asked, and what assurances do, does the county have? Given that our funding is dependent on the number of people that are physically here, what have you heard back from the census in terms of reliability of the numbers that we've gotten so far? I realize they haven't certified yet, but is that because of COVID? Is that because of the fear of answering the questions? You know, can you, can you give us an idea of what you've gotten in the way of a report from the Census Committee to give us some guidance on what might be delaying the process?
We have not taken that step yet, but that is certainly something that we will be looking into, both trying to get an idea of when we might get the numbers and the process that was followed. I think it's in flux right now, but we will stay on top of it, and we'll be providing the board that information as we can find it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I don't see any further questions. So do we, do we need a motion there? I guess we do.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen. Is there a second? Second. And seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. And we do have some new laptops in the room, so staff is coming around to each of you to get that resolved as soon as possible. The next item is Item B3, which is in agreement with, for solid waste watering facility. And this is Scott Stromer will present this item.
Services. Item B3 is asking the board to award and execute an agreement with the overall lowest response from a responsible bidder, Vogel Brothers Building Company, for various construction projects and infrastructure improvements at the solid waste de-watering facility for the Water Resources Department at a total cost of $12,129,426. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 3% was established for the project, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving the goal. Your Service Department does recommend approval.
Thank you. And any discussion, motion?
Move approval.
Commissioner White, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And where are we now, Ms. Wise?
We are a few minutes before our 10 o'clock public hearings. If it is okay, I'd like to take a break till 10:00. We can get your laptops all set, and we will be ready to go and make sure that that hand function is working properly for you.
Great. So we will take a break now for, till 10:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've returned to the Board of County Commissioners. We had some technical difficulties there for a short time and a break in our agenda. So we will go now to Ms. Wise.
Yes, and thank you to staff for remedying that situation over so quickly. Our first public hearing is Item D1, which is a public hearing for ELAP program, and Forrest Turberville will lead us through that item.
Thank you, Ms. Wise, and good morning, Commissioners Forrest Turberville, Conservation, Environmental Lands Management Department. The item before you today is comprised of two parts. The first is to conduct a public hearing as required by the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program, also known as ELAP, Ordinance 08-16, to consider granting a conservation easement to Hillsborough County EPC on a portion of the Baumscrub addition ELAP site. And this is for the Paseo Almar I-75 flyover project wetland mitigation. And this is in accordance with the recommendations of the ELAP General Committee back in June of 2020. The second part is to request your approval of the conservation easement to Hillsborough County EPC that's associated with this public hearing. The costs associated with this agenda item are limited to the cost of the public hearing advertisement, signage, and recording, which should not exceed $1,000 and can be accommodated within the operating budget of the Public Works Department. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. This public hearing, and do we have any? We have no one listed to speak, so I'll close the public hearing. Any Commissioner discussion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Cullen. And seeing no other comments, can we call the roll?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes, but I would like to suggest that I made the motion and Commissioner Smith seconded it. You are not hearing those of us that are virtual when we're making motions or seconds.
Smith?
Yes, and I echo Commissioner Overman's comments there. We have been making motions, seconding, calling for attention, and we're not being heard in the room.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And I'm not sure what to do about that, honestly. Do we have any? I know it depends when I'm virtual. I can hear it virtually, and then when I'm in the room, I can hear it in the room.
We will check on that, Madam Chair, because, yes, that was the issue when you were virtual. You couldn't hear the people in the room. We will see what we can do about that.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Yes, the next item is Item D2, which is the first of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement. This is a public hearing, but no final action is required at this time. Adam Gormley will present Items D2 and D3.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley with Development Services Department. Item D2 is the first of two public hearings to consider a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the School Board of Hillsborough County, the county, and Polty Home Company LLC. This agreement is for the proposed Girl Scout Camp subdivision consisting of 99 single-family detached units. The agreement calls for a payment of $250,983 to fund nine middle school student stations at the water set PK through eight school UU to accommodate the impacts of the project. The second public hearing is scheduled to be held February 3, 2021. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, correct? We have several speakers signed up at this time. And I see the first speaker is Kami Corbett. Ms. Corbett?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the developer Polty Homes. And just for clarification for members of the public, because I did get a couple of calls on this, this proportionate share agreement does not authorize any additional development of the Camp Dorothy Thomas Girl Scout Camp. This is only for the northern 30 acres, which was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in August. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. And I see we have Jason Ambrose.
Commissioner, we have no more speakers called in for the rest of the day.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing with that and move to Commissioner Discussion. And Commissioner Smith, do you have your hand up for this?
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of questions for Adam, Mr. Gormley. So we're seeing a lot of, or we've seen quite a few, prop share agreements come in essentially paying for seats in the water set school. What assurance do we have that if more prop shares have been granted, then is actual space in the water set school by the time each development comes online? I mean, is there a point at which, you know, it's kind of musical chairs, and when the water set has filled up, there might be some developments who have paid prop share agreements ostensibly for that but are left holding the bag? How can they, how can they limit the prop shares we're giving to the actual number of seats that can be built, given the fact that, you know, we don't have a crystal ball here to ensure that each of these developments that are buying those seats is going to be built or be built, you know, in time to need those seats? Do you take my point?
I believe so, Commissioner. So the capacity on the schools, I should clarify this. These agreements, before they come to the Board of County Commissioners, go to the school board itself and are acted on and approved by the school board before coming to the board. The school district monitors the capacity that they have available in these schools. And by moving these forward and bringing them to the school board and the board approving them, there is a determination made by the district that there is adequate capacity to accommodate the seats being purchased as well as the other students that are generated by each of these agreements. Each one of these projects is reviewed for elementary, middle, and high school capacity. And so each one has an independent determination on each level of schooling, whether the students that would be generated by this project can be accommodated by the existing or planned schools. And the school district does reserve seats for projects that are approved. So for instance, this particular one, the elementary school students will be considered vested students, for lack of a better term, that are programmed into the capacity of the existing schools.
And the Dorothy Thomas, Camp Dorothy Thomas development, that's pretty far from water set. So the idea, though, is that they're buying, nevertheless, they're buying seats way over in water set, and their kids will go to a closer school. And those kids would bump out seats in the next closest school, next closest school, rippling all the way to capacity in water set?
Commissioner, that's my understanding of how the district is assigning students and zoning students in the event that the students aren't going to go to the school, in this case, with the water set school. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I have just one last question. You know, I keep trying to peel back understanding of this process bit by bit. And I think what we really need to do at some midpoint soon is have a workshop with the school board members and really flesh out how this is working and where it's not working, and how we can improve the process, especially up the, up the, the upriver, upstream of these schools' issues, all the way up into the zoning process before it becomes, we have school board, district representatives here, like we had in September, warning that we're in crisis in South County, and we don't have schools. I mean, if this was all working perfectly, we would not be in crisis. So we need to take a look at the process and consider how we could improve it. But for today, let me just ask this one last question. The language in each of the three prop share agreements before us today notes that the capacity improvements, namely the seats in the schools that the prop shares we're authorizing will be buying, the capacity improvements will be in place or under actual construction within three years after the issuance of the first subdivision final plat or site development, construction plan approval for the whatever project. So I just want to get clear on where that, is that requirement in the interlocal that we have with the school district? Or is it in some statutory state level that we should allow this three-year window? And Part B, is, does that, is there a period, then, where this school crowding crunch would be great if they begin, if they're building houses within that three-year window before the extra seats, before the school is actually built? If the school only has to be in actual construction, under actual construction, within three years after the issuance of the first subdivision? Are we allowing for a pinch point there of a few years?
Commissioner, to answer the first question, the three years is the level of service standard that's in the comprehensive plan. And it does get reflected in the interlocal agreement. But the root of that level of service standard is the comprehensive plan. The second question about the timing of the school and the students, I'm not sure that I could accurately answer that. I don't know what the school district's staging plan is for students. I would presume, to risk of presuming, that in approving and moving forward the proportionate share agreement, that the district is anticipating the students that could come from this and how to accommodate those students.
Thank you. I just raised those issues for, really, for future discussion and to flesh that out as we try to look at the process and improve the process so we are not in crisis with school capacity anywhere in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And to follow up with Commissioner Smith's questions, who monitors that three years? So, you know, is it the county, the land use and the permit and the zoning that monitors that three-year progress? Or is it the school district? And we're communicating to them where a project is actually being built out to indicate that their timeline is either expiring or they're moving not fast enough on the school building? That's, I think there lies the, sort of, the issue is that, you know, when there is inconsistency in that three-year period is where we run into a problem. So how in our agreement with these prop share agreements, who monitors that three years and raises the flag? Is it the school district or is it the county?
Commissioner, the three-year, the obligation is actually on the school board itself, and they are agreeing to meet that obligation. I don't know that it would say that we are monitoring the school board's performance under the agreement. But they have the scenario where they need to, when they approve these agreements, they know these students are coming and will have to accommodate them within that three-year period. I can tell you that of all the proportionate share agreements that have come before the board, there have been no, every project that is, that is proposed as mitigation is something that...
Somebody's not called.
It's something, sorry. It's something that our schools that are actually approved for citing and approved to go straight to the permitting stage. There's no lag that the county is putting into the process for a determination of if that school improvement can be made. I guess that's a longer answer. The shorter version is that it is, it's the obligation of the school board and school district to follow through with what they have agreed to.
I understand that. But given recent visit we've had from the school board, it appears as though there's some challenges there that Commissioner Smith brought up, that we do need to work together with the school board. And we've heard from parents and teachers and other constituents of the issue associated with crowded schools. So, especially in areas that are growing rather rapidly. So I think there is some tweaking we could do to do that, make sure that three-year window is addressed effectively when it comes to, you know, when the building's going to be available for to put students in, that we're, you know, allocating dollars to find seats for those children in those communities, especially when they're not even close to each other. It's, that I find rather challenging as well. So I'll stop there. But I think it's important that we really work on this process and move that forward sometime this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think a workshop on this would be a very good idea, particularly for those of us that are new and may not have the same level of knowledge of how all this works that some of the veteran commissioners do. What I would love to hear, not now, but when we do have this workshop, is the process that the school district staff goes through when they evaluate these proportionate share agreements. And I would like an example of one that they've rejected, because it seems to me we're only getting the ones that they approve. So I would love to hear what type of criteria would lead to the rejection of one of these applications. So if this gets scheduled, I'd like to just ask if that be part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other discussion, but I myself would like to address this somewhat. Commissioner Cohen, you might. And Commissioner Smith is certainly the best expert we have besides our staff. But we really know, I would say for myself, even though dug into this, this is like, we really have very little background on this at all. And we had one joint school board meeting with the county that I had requested, and it turned into, with the city council, and then, I don't know, it turned into showing us school designs that had parking garages. And we didn't really ever get to the meet, which at the time was impact fees and this exact issue, the citing of schools, and it wasn't addressed at all. I think it's really important that it be addressed. I'm somewhat disturbed. And, Mr. Gormley, I know that I had asked about this because Commissioner Smith remanded back one of our land use items that came to us again last month. In fact, to say, and it is in water set, to say to look at this land, and it was, it could accommodate a school. And in fact, is now accommodating, apparently, if it, if it happens, a charter school. We had two charter schools put within the urban service area, and yet we have been told, and the school board looked at that property, as I understand, Mr. Gormley, they were asked to and said that they were not interested in pursuing it. And, you know, I don't know why. But at any rate, I think it's really important that we meet with the, with the school board, just with a workshop, because I think the school board, apparently, these items just go on their consent agenda. And I really wonder if there's ever been a pro-rata share rejected. I would be surprised if that's true. But I think your point is well taken. So, you know, I don't know if anybody at this time, it would seem to me, really, to look to, as Commissioner Smith first suggested, perhaps she'd want to make a motion for, I think it would be very good for us and the school board to have a joint meeting and to have this particular item explained to us, because we'd been told six months ago it was in crisis. And we're just like, it's been very difficult to understand where, what lies, and how things are being done. And it seems to me there might definitely be some tweaking or more that needs to be done in this process. And I really like to understand how other counties are doing it and what's going on. So if there's anyone there that would like to make a motion as to regards to have a meeting with the, oh, I see, and I see Commissioner Myers' hand is raised, too, to have a joint meeting with the school board and try to bring these issues up, and maybe sooner rather than later, since this, these issues keep coming to us. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners have a joint workshop with the school district board.
And do we have a second? I would, I would say, just from, I don't know if we have to go further with this, but to address and to understand and have explained to us how the school sightings are done with the kind of guidance that was taken in here and has been for several months. I think we've been talking about this. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, no, just for my, just a point of clarification. I don't know whether the school board has ever rejected one of these or not. I was sort of interested in the staff analysis that actually goes on, whether or not they ferret them out. I mean, I think we sort of need to know at all levels.
Oh, I think so, too.
You know, that's all. So that, I just want...
Okay, thank you. Sorry to misstate what your intentions were. Commissioner Smith, I see your hand is still up. Did you want to, or is it still from before? Or did you have something else to say?
And so first to Commissioner Cohen's remarks, just to provide the historical context, this whole prop share agreement business is quite new to the board. It's my understanding that the very first ones began coming to us only within the last two years. Is that correct, Mr. Gormley?
Yes, I believe it was 2018 when you first started receiving prop share agreements.
So it's new to all of us, Commissioner Cohen. And as we've had them, we've asked some questions that have resulted in a little bit of refinement of the information that comes to us. But we're very much, all of us, kind of sorting this out because it is, there's so much of it that is in the school district's hands, and then it comes to us. But when it comes to us, it comes, these things, these prop share agreements come to us in two public hearings. So, you know, there's this, there's this process that indicates there's some important business going on. And yet, we're kind of just handed this thing to approve. And anyway, we keep saying we need to take more of a look at this. Now, I also want to ask maybe Ms. Wise, or haven't we, didn't we talk about setting up a workshop with the school district? Isn't that something that we've, we've asked staff to do before? Or am I, am I misremembering what happened? And it would be good to have direction today?
I think having the direction today would be terrific, and that would give us clear direction. Staff, of course, have been meeting with school district staff as well. So we could proceed with that direction today.
Right, and the last thing, so I'll second the motion, but the last thing, or support it if it's already been seconded. But the last thing I'll note is that this is coming up in, the issues of school citing are coming up in the public school board meetings as well. And I think that they, the new school board members in there, and maybe some of the old ones have a misunderstanding about what we are doing that's impacting school crowding and what they're doing, what their, the limits of their authority is, and what, how much we're doing that's contributing to the problem of school crowding. And so it would really be good to get us all in one room to hear, listen to each other, and try to develop processes that could be better, address this, and work together better than each of us talking about the other in our separate board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I see Commissioner Cohen's hand. Are you just, okay. So seeing no further discussion, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers to have a joint workshop with the school board to address school citing issues. And have a second by Commissioner Hagan. And seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And I don't think we have to do anything as to that public hearing. I'll just say technically, we have just a gray box on the screen that's been up there for a long time without a person or anything. So I don't know if that can be taken down on our side. But at any rate, we can, Ms. Wise, move to the next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item D3, which is also a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement, this one with Franklin Development Corporation. Adam Gormley will present as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services. Item D3 is the first of two public hearings to consider a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the school board of Hillsborough County, the county, and Franklin Development Corp. The agreement relates to the Bougan Villas Townhome subdivision consisting of 40 single-family attached units. The agreement calls for a payment of $55,775 to construct two middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of this project. These seats will also be constructed at PK through eight school UU at water set. And the second public hearing will be held on February 3, 2021, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I have one person, Clayton Brickelmeier, signed up for this. Is Mr. Brickelmeier available?
Pam, can you hear me?
Can.
Clayton Brickelmeier, Brickelmeier Law Group, representing the applicant. I'm just available for questions.
Seeing none and seeing no further speakers, I'll close the public hearing. And is there any board discussion at this point? Seems like we had it for the last one. So, and I don't think we need a motion or anything to move forward on this. And so, Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is item E two, which is our emergency management operations related to COVID-19. And before we get started with that, you're going to hear a lot of information today regarding our testing, the cases, the vaccination plan. And I just wanted to say that you're going to hear that these details and the ever-changing environment on the vaccinations. But we have vaccinated over 20,000 people over the last few weeks. We have had some stumbles, but we have been able to accomplish that goal. And we did that with our partners. We did that with you and the public being very, very patient. And so we wanted to thank you. With every comment we received, it helped us formulate our frequently asked questions and helped us communicate better to you and to the public. So I appreciate that, and I really am very grateful for our partners and for our staff who was activated to work the various vaccination sites and all those citizens who sent us messages, whether that was good comments or bad comments, and their wonderful experiences that they had at the vaccination sites. And we really do thank you all for that. So I just wanted to begin with that presentation, and then we will turn it on to, on to Tim Dudley to begin the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tim Dudley, Emergency Management Director, Hillsborough County. During our current operations over the past few weeks, a total vaccines completed by county DOH, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Tampa Fire Rescue, points of dispensing, POTS, is a little over 20,000. This is an update to the slide pack, package that you have in front of you, but we wanted to share that great news this morning. POTS completed a little over 10,000 vaccines last week. We continue a robust testing program here in Hillsborough County, and that will continue throughout even the vaccine operation. So we want to have a balanced approach to this program, so we get a good picture moving forward. Hillsborough County testing sites peaked the week of December 27th, New Year's Eve Day and holidays averaging 22, 27 daily tests collected. Last week, Hillsborough County averaged about 1775 daily tests collected, down about 13.5% from the previous week. Our Vance Vogel Sports Complex has temporarily suspended testing operations to allow for vaccine operations and supportive of vaccine shots over the next two weeks. We will, we will return testing at that site once vaccine operations are completed. Some more good news, USF anticipates returning to testing Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 9:00 AM to noon in the next few weeks to come. So we are appreciative to see those partners return back to our program. The brand, the Brandon Federally Qualified Healthcare Center that previously supported us for testing will now support, shift their efforts to priority of vaccine efforts moving There are no PP challenges at this moment. We have nine guests in isolation. And an update, court enforcement officers continue our countywide mask mandate educational blitz campaign at various businesses throughout the county to meet with and educate proprietors about mandatory mask mandates still in effect as we battle the COVID pandemic. To date, they have visited more than 2,400 establishments and businesses and have been responsive and respectful. They have been responsive and respectful to the process. They, we have investigated complaints, and with the use of digital video messaging boards and throughout the county, we are maximizing the public awareness campaign. In the past month, only a handful of businesses have been cited for non-compliance. So good news from the field and with our partners moving through that campaign. In testing, we're still seeing the largest share of testing being conducted in the healthcare infrastructure at 76%. And our initial numbers from reports overall Hillsborough County residents, as of the date of this report, we're seeing 49,246 residents have been vaccinated. So we'll continue to populate this as the weeks move forward. So we'll get a pretty good picture of how vaccinations and are continuing to grow and what part of the healthcare system versus the county-supported test sites as well as state-supported vaccine and testing sites. That concludes my updates on testing and vaccine numbers for county sites. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, we can, I don't have that coming up on my screen.
Then we can move on to Dr. Holt, unless Chairman Kemp, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Well, I was just going to add at the end of the presentation as well, that I have, and I, I know on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I think I can say this to so many people in the county, we've heard very good reports about the ways that our sites were so well managed and so well done. And I know that staff, in terms of everything that we've done in COVID, we've really stepped up in a way that other counties have not been able to have those resources or that staff, time and attention. And I've just, I mean, I've seen so many staff that have been working on weekends and evenings and losing sleep and doing everything they could to make sure that we have the best testing and vaccination programs available in this county that we could possibly have. And, you know, we've met a lot of challenges, but I've been very, very proud of our staff and the way that they have moved forward with this, so I wanted to let that be known. And with that, we can move on to the.
Thank you for those comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Dr. Doug Holt, Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. As usual, I will provide a brief overview of our epidemiology information and our healthcare systems, and then Mr. Wagner will review our dashboard. Mr. Wagner, could I have the first slide, please? As we all, I think, are familiar with, this is our epidemic curve over really the past nine months. I can see it taking, showing the form of a U curve. The peaks in July were followed by a descent, and then subsequently a higher peaks that we've seen in December and January where we are. Our seven-day averages, while they've decreased, which is the good news, our 14-day have increased, and it really indicates a variability from the day-to-day that we're seeing. One hopeful sign that Mr. Wagner will point out is that we are doing more testing and our seven-day positivity is starting to go down, so I'm very hopeful that maybe that's a good sign. Our hospitals, while stressed, have reported on a call last Friday, a conference call, that they have stabilized, even though their peak census is, it does exceed their July peak. Occupancy ICUs and the non-ICUs remain around 80%. Individual hospitals will vary significantly. Mr. Wagner will also note that we have added a, the number of residents vaccinated. Important to distinguish that from the number of vaccines administered or given in Hillsborough County, whether it's from the public sites of our, that I'll be describing later, or the private sector and our hospitals and our federally qualified clinics, Tampa Family and Suncoast. Would also note that this number is an under-reported number because there is delays in the data entry into the Florida shot statewide system, and, which is also somewhat backlog because of the volume of shots being reported. So this number will remain a bit behind and also an underestimate of the actual toll worth. With that, Mr. Wagner, would you proceed?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Wagner, Business Analyst, Healthcare Services Department. Again, I will present the publicly available COVID dashboard on the Hillsborough County website. Today, total cases are above 94,000 of confirmed cases since the start of the pandemic. We've had attributed 1,200 fatalities, and as Dr. Holt was indicating, residents vaccinated is a new component that we've added to the dashboard. Our IT department added that. We have an estimated 51,265 Hillsborough County residents vaccinated from various partners in the community. Second row, Dr. Holt indicated our seven-day look for positive cases has decreased by 27%, but our 14-day rate has still gone up 14%. So again, short-term on a very microcosm has decreased, but when we look it out to a 14-day, the cases still have gone up, so we need to be diligent. The testing, as Dr. Holt indicated, has gone up to one of our highest levels since the start of the pandemic. On the 14-day average, there was over 45,000 tests on a 14-day average completed by our partners and services. The positivity rate on a 14-day average, as you can see, indicated is down to 13.64%. This is updated weekly, so there is a bit of a lag, but we do see a trend decreasing from the previous seven-day count. The hospitalization data on the final row, again, as Dr. Holt indicated, our hospitals are managing and they are stressed with occupancy greater, greater than 83% and nearly 84%. But the ICU occupancy varies by hospital, is around 71%. And again, this row of data is updated weekly from our data source of HHS. The cases by day summary on the bottom row, looking at the curve from left to right, starting October 2020 to January 21, has seen an increase. As you can see on the very microcosm on the far right-hand side, a slight decrease in the last four to seven days of cases reported per day. The next page is our hospitalization summary data. Again, speak on, speaking on the last two rows, the hospital census, you have seen an increase in the total count, as indicated by Dr. Holt, as well as on the admissions on the second, on the right-hand side, an increase to nearly 70 a day on admissions. So again, the hospital admissions and census is still increased with capacity. The testing summary, again, speaking to the bottom row, looking at the testing per week over the last month, since May to January 2021, on the far right-hand side, this last seven-day week and 14-day count of positivity has shown a decrease. The overall test, again, as indicated, is over 45,000, which has been the largest two-week count since the pandemic started. So again, our testing has increased to nearly that goal set forth by Dr. Holt. The case data by school age groups, the top row is again the daily individual cases, which indicates variability. We bring the bottom row, a seven-day count per 100,000 to address trending and smoothing this. Again, from the school age children, we've seen the increase from November on the far-left hand side to January. Again, following the general population, there's been a slight decrease in the last four to seven days. But again, overall, the school age children has increased, matching with the system at large of the citizens and also up there. Thank you.
And do we, Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next part of the presentation will be the vaccination plan. So Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator, will begin that discussion. Tim Dudley will present, and Dr. Holt will be part of this discussion and go through the plan as well.
Thank you.
Question, please, regarding to, to what we just heard from Mr. Wagner. I had my hand raised for quite some time before we move on.
I couldn't see part of my screen because the program was up on there where I was looking for the hand raising. You're recognized.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. Mr. Wagner, can you please bring the slide up that shows the cases per 100,000, a slide
Yes, Commissioners, up.
We'll try the one before that, I believe.
This is the main dashboard. The cases per 100,000 were the school age children. It's this one.
No, I actually, I think it's prior to that. The, yeah, the, I guess it's the last one before the vaccination plan in our backup, I believe. It shows the seven-day high ranking that indicates 175 per 100,370.
Yes, ma'am. That's the Dr. Holt one. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
This one, yes. And I, I'd like to, to cover this before we get into a little bit further. What this shows us is basically the impact of behavior by, by our citizens and our businesses as we've addressed the, the pandemic. We heard earlier that masking and social distancing doesn't matter, but the science does and has been presented that it's critically important that we adopt policies and procedures and behaviors that support it. As you can see from this slide, that does indicate the various different phases of the way we've actually either adopted certain processes or adopted certain policies, that prior to opening Phase One, our numbers were in what considered a low area, and we were not seeing numbers at a great amount. We were looking at under 100 a day. We did open up the, the bars and restaurants, as well as many other businesses, and in the early part of June, that changed behavior. It allowed people to be close to each other. It allowed people to attend events and go into businesses without masks. And then in mid-June, we added the mask order. You can see from the data that clearly, while it took a little while, two or three weeks, the numbers started coming down. People started wearing masks, social distancing, businesses started getting adjusted to what they needed to do to be part of the solution, and we saw many businesses doing a great job. But we didn't, it didn't happen, their numbers didn't fall, until we actually closed the bars. And then it fell rapidly. We did reopen them in August, so you can see wherein the numbers continued to fall rapidly. Then we got to September, we reopened the bars in, in August, the numbers started creeping back up, schools started opening up, kids were in place, and then our numbers rapidly increased as we approached the holidays. You can also see that as the holiday period and as people gathered, whether they were inside or outside of a business, that they gathered, whether they're wearing masks or not, they gathered at a level that we were looking at 1,000 exposures a day on January 11th, or, or testing positives a day. That is significantly higher and, and well in excess of the range of safety that manages community spread. Now, since then, we've, we've adopted a, a rule that we adopted back in December that required people to be seated while served, and, you know, we haven't had as many people out, you know, enjoying our businesses as we saw over the holiday period, and the numbers have fallen. So to address what we heard earlier from one of our business owners, that there is a, a minimum level of safety that can be provided so businesses can operate, and with our citizens' support of what we heard from Dr. Michaels in December, that we needed to increase our, our efforts to stay safe, to help businesses stay open, to allow people to have confidence that a minimum level of, of protection is being adopted by businesses so that those individuals can safely go to those businesses and, and spend money and enjoy, you know, what the businesses. and enjoy, you know, what the businesses offer. Having a policy in place that's a minimum level of recommendation helps people be confident that they can go out and be safe. But when we've seen that violated, you can see what the impact is. The highest point of 1,000, that was actually on January 11 of cases of over 1,000 a day, has dropped because not as many people were out as they were during the holidays. So that's good news. But it makes it very obvious that those businesses that are at risk of having people close to each other without masks on, where they're eating and drinking, which is obviously something you want to do if you want to go to a bar or restaurant, does increase the risk of exposure. So anything we can do, as we will discuss later, supports that the data shows that the mask-wearing matters. The data shows that the social distancing matters. And all of our medical professionals and our scientists and epidemiologists have recommended that that is the best course of action for addressing this. It is very clear our citizens are very concerned about being exposed to this virus. We would not having people rush to the door at 3,000, you know, hits a minute to try and get a vaccine if they weren't concerned about being exposed to this virus. So I will discuss the issue later, but I wanted to make sure you saw the trend where we can actually see how behavior matters. And setting a minimum policy to address the impact of this virus on our economy and on our families and on our hospitals does matter as well. And I'll stop there.
Anyone else that wants to comment at this time, so we'll move on with the presentation. I know that many people are interested in hearing about the vaccination program. Mr. Horwiddell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Administrator. Did want to make some very brief introductory comments. I don't want to replow the same field for comments that have already been made. Would note that the vaccination effort is only one of three prongs that we've been pursuing. The other two, of course, are the mask enforcement and also the, what is the second one? Of course, I'm having a mental block. But it's part of our effort to make sure that we do testing, there's the second one, as well as mask enforcement. These are all very, very robust efforts that staff has been engaged in. There have been multiple departments, and as the county administrator has made clear, this is the highest priority for us. So we are taking every resource and deploying it to make sure that we can meet the needs of our residents. I know that Tim Dudley will be talking a little bit about the vaccination effort over the past couple of weeks. And then Dr. Holt will be presenting the vaccination plan. And finally, Leon Lopes will be presenting the communication plan so that we can have the outreach to our residents. I want to conclude by thanking you for your support and you and your aides for your patience as you field calls from people. Clearly, there is much more demand than we have that seen available. We're working every day with the state to try and make sure we have a number of options available, not just fixed sites, but also mobile sites, to make sure that we can get out into the community. And happy to say that we've made some progress. We have successfully vaccinated approximately 19,000 people. That is a tremendous accomplishment given what we were handed at the very beginning of the year. So with that, I will turn it over to Emergency Management Director Tim Dudley for a report on the vaccinations over the last couple of weeks, and then looking forward. Tim?
You are muted. Got me. Thank you so much. Again, Commissioners, good morning and thank you, Mr. Horwiddell. Over the past two weeks, county staff, the Department of Health, partners, key stakeholders have worked hard to get the vaccine to the community, which is a top priority. We realized there were problems along the way, and that not everyone who wanted to get the vaccine was able to get one, but each week, we met our vaccine goal. We started this initiative on January 4. The county rolled out a website portal and call center to set appointments for vaccination for those 65 and older. Even with some initial challenges, the county was able to fill slots for the 9,000 available appointments on the first day of registration. From January 6 through the 9th, Hillsborough County, in partnership with Florida Department of Health, began vaccination operations and completed approximately 8,400 vaccinations at four points of dispensing geographically located throughout the county. To improve the process and customer service experience, a new vendor was hired by the county. New registration began January 12 for an additional 9,000 vaccinations made available to the county. One of the key components to this new rollout was how calls were handled. In an effort to prevent those identified target groups from calling the system and potentially overwhelming the network, a matrix was developed to spread out the call load. During Tuesday's registration, those 85 and older were directed to call between 8:00 and 10:00 a.m., and those between 75 and 84 years old were directed to call between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. And finally, those between 65 and 74 were directed to call between 2:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. By 5:00 p.m., a little over 9,000 patient appointments were scheduled. In January 13 through 15, a little over 9,000 vaccinations were administered for the second week of vaccinations dispensing. By the end of the first two weeks, Hillsborough County administered close to 19,000 vaccine first-dose shots to residents 65 and older. This was the initial rollout of the vaccine program. Hillsborough County is currently coordinating with the Florida Division of Emergency Management to operate University Mall as a state-supported site, which includes a partnership with state vendors for registration, call center support. University Mall will operate with state incident management team nurses, Florida National Guard, vendor staff, and a few county employees as needed. Vaccine allotments from Florida Department of Emergency Management and Florida Department of Health will be dispensed through University Mall seven days a week, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Appointments will become available as more vaccines are received by the county. We did open up University Mall this morning, and the teams are actually on-site this morning putting shots in arms. Hillsborough County is working with FDM for those needing the COVID-19 vaccines from county previous points of dispensing operations for second doses. Those vaccinations during the first week of 6 through 9 January and the second week of 13 to 15 January, a vaccination dispensing will return to the same pod location where they receive their first vaccine shot. We know that has been information that the public has been wanting to hear from. Hillsborough County is working with the state vendors to support those who are returning to University Mall for second doses from 28 through 30 January. And the county vendor for those returning to Strawberry Festival Grounds, Vance Vogel Park, and Rettis Park will begin second doses 27 through the 30th of January. Our vendors will reach out to residents for second vaccine scheduling. They will not be required to re-register for accounts. Vendors will reach out to notify them of second doses time and remind them of locations. Hillsborough County, Florida Department of Health, and the University of South Florida College of Nursing organized the joint outreach effort to deliver COVID-19 vaccines to senior partners, independent living facilities, using our targeted vaccine-area teams, TVAs. The teams hopes to reach full and part-time residents aged 65 and older who might have trouble getting to one of the drive-through sites where injections are administered at no cost. The county has identified 350 housing complexes and began administering shots to dozens of seniors.
There hasn't really been any change.
And began administering shots to dozens of seniors at the first complex selected for mobile vaccination clinics on January 14 and 15. A total of 218 residents of these initial complexes were given the first-dose shot of the vaccines, and an additional three sites are scheduled for this week. In partnership with the Department of Health, we will be distributing vaccines to other healthcare workers, such as smaller medical practices, dentists, podiatrists, et cetera, who have not yet been vaccinated, as well as continued scheduling for the first-dose vaccinations for low-income, independent senior living facilities. Additionally, the Department of Health, with support from Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Office of Emergency Management, Tampa Fire Rescue, and the Department of Health, have scheduled a faith-based vaccination site in conjunction with 12 other community churches with a target of 600 vaccinations for this upcoming Sunday. And this is in conjunction with the state mission as well. DOH continues to manage vaccine storage and distribution from the county staging area for the state mission of vaccinating staff, residents of assisted living facilities in Hillsborough and Pinellas County, as well as vaccines from multiple state missions within the Tampa Bay region. In conclusion, Hillsborough County remains committed to our seniors to provide opportunities for COVID vaccine vaccinations as quickly as supplies are available. The county is currently partnering with the state of Florida to identify potential locations for an additional state-run vaccination site for residents aged 65 years and older, frontline healthcare workers. We will continue to monitor the progress of the vaccination efforts and make the adjustments as needed as supplies are available. This concludes my update.
Smith, has her hand raised? You're recognized.
And I just want to talk about a couple of things and make sure that it's recognized that this county has put all hands on deck to administer these vaccinations while we are still helping with testing. And both of those, the testing and the vaccinations, are actually state health department programs that our county is helping the state to administer within our county. And in doing that, we have turned out employees from the director and management levels all the way down through rank and file. County employees are being called into emergency duty on top of their regular jobs and responsibilities and showing up at the, and working at these vaccination sites, directing traffic, checking people in, helping with all that logistics. And we, through all of that, we are getting a lot of email and calls from citizens who are saying thank you. And thank you not only for making it work, but making that vaccination process work efficiently and smoothly, and for being kind. I keep hearing about how kind and reassuring our county staff is at these vaccination sites. And keep in mind, this is not their professional area of expertise. It's not their normal job. It's what they've been called into service to do as an emergency after a year-long, a situation where we've been addressing this pandemic with helping the state provide the testing services, standing up our hotels and areas where we can help quarantine and isolate people who have no other place to isolate. So we've been in this for the long haul, and we've been doing a lot of work. The one piece that was, that had difficulties was the appointment setting. And we've gone through a couple of vendors with that, and the state will be now handling that. In my view, that's the more efficient way that could have avoided some problems if it had started out that way. But luckily, we are, you know, now looking forward to a smoother process. Couple of questions, and I'll also thank Mr. Horwiddell, who has been keeping us posted as things change and new information comes from the state three times a day, as everybody from the state down is wrestling with changing conditions and figuring out how to address this as we go. And Mr. Horwiddell has been sending us a report sometimes quite late at night as everybody is working double shifts and overtime to address this. But as the state takes on the appointment-setting process, one of the pieces of information I got is that, and I just want to confirm, that our citizens who signed up through our, and set up an account through our website already to date, is the state reaching back out to them? Or do they, should we advise them to start fresh with the state system and call that state number?
Great question, Commissioner. I appreciate that question. We've actually been able to take that information for the individuals that went on the CDR Health and created a patient account. We've been able to take that information, transfer that over to the state teams, and they'll be made a priority, and they'll be contacted to remind them of their location and appointment time. They do not have to re-register.
Great, great. And second question that we're getting a lot of concerned people. So I heard you talk is about the second doses. And I heard you saying that the people that we vaccinated in our first two weeks at the three sites other than the University Mall, we will get vaccines and provide those people with second doses? And we will contact those people by email or phone to set appointments for them?
Correct, exactly. We will, again, reach out. No one has to re-register. We're going to reach out, remind them to return back to their original location for vaccines and their time. And we'll be doing that pretty soon because we'll start those vaccinations next week.
Right, right. And then finally, for people who got their initial shot at the University Mall, I would not clear on what we tell them in answer to their questions. Do we have that settled with the state yet, since the state is now using University Mall? Who will be reaching out to them?
Correct. We settled that late last night. They will return to University Mall. And again, their information has been passed along to the state system, and they will receive a call reminding them of their location and time.
Thank you. That does it for me. And thank you, Mr. Dudley, for all your good work during this, these difficult and challenging times.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't see any other hands up. And maybe I missed this one. Just for a little bit of clarification. So right now, anybody who has signed up for our system, and I understand some 34,000 people did, some of them who have received vaccines, but they will, are they going to, with people calling now and everything, will they have any kind of priority or just be mixed in? I'm just curious to know that. Or do we know?
We spoke to the vendors at the state, and again, they have the pre-made list, and then we do have the current folks coming in. So we're going to take a look at that. They have over 5,000 call-takers at their disposal for this system. So we're going to try to take a balanced approach at that to making sure that we're looking at the list we already have and folks that's calling in.
Madam Chair, before, oh, I'm sorry. I will just say that, yes, that is a continuing priority focus for us. And I know the state is aware of those 30,000 names, and they are working through. In fact, I know- In fact, I know from what I've, what's been reported, some folks who are on that, that account creation portal, they have already received calls from the state.
Thank, thank. I probably missed some of this too because it's kind of complicated to follow all of this. But so today at university or the former University Mall, they're receiving vaccines, there's people there receiving vaccines today.
And that is correct.
And who are those people? Were they called from our list or how did they, how did those people get their appointments today?
Yes, that's probably a combination. As Tim was saying, there, the state's number is live. However, the thirty thousand names that we've provided to the state, they are already calling those folks and getting them into available appointments. So they're working as hard as they can to distribute the amount of doses that they have. What we've understood from the state is, according to the governor's press release anyway, they're doing a thousand six hundred appointments a day. So as soon as they can get through that list, they, they've made that commitment. They recognize that those are already folks who meet the criteria in most cases. And if they don't, then they'll figure out how to tell them you need to apply at a different time. So they do have that under control.
These sixteen hundred appointments a day, six days a week?
Seven days a week. We've confirmed that with the state yesterday.
And just one more question here, and I'm sure it's been said, but I'm not sure it's been said. We could say it again. So people make an appointment by making a phone call, correct?
That is correct. At this time, the state number is active. They are working on standing up a web portal. There, and it's, we're not unique in the challenges that we face. Very much, pretty much every county that I've heard of has had the same problem with the crush of people wanting to get in to make appointments. Appointments fill up very fast, whether it's through a call center or website, and there are numerous crashes. We have weathered that storm, I think. The state is trying to put in a system so that it accommodates that crush. We'll see how effective that is. I know they had some similar issues at the state level when the DEO rolled out their unemployment benefit package in the summer. I think they've learned a lot since then. So our hope is that it's as seamless and smooth as possible. We'll do everything we can, of course, at the county level to assist the state. We've made that commitment. We're very appreciative. And I think it's, again, emblematic of the partnership that we have with everyone. Department of Health, state, all of our team. We're all working together to make it the best it possibly can be.
Hundred number, can we give that number?
Tim, do you have that handy? Now, I do want to caution, though, people who have already signed up through the CDR portal do not need to go and re-register the state. We are already contacting them.
Yes, we could, we encourage folks to visit our site at hcflgov.net/vaccine. And they'll find the number there. The number is eight six six two zero zero three eight nine six. And for TTY, it's eight three three four seven six one zero two nine.
Is that open twenty-four seven?
That's correct.
That's all, all my questions. And I know we have a presentation from Ms. Lopez and seeing no others, and maybe she was going to get to this, but we'll, we'll go to Ms. Lopez.
One quick question, please, before we move on.
I was premature here. So first I'll recognize Commissioner Overman, and then we'll go to Dr. Holt. Excuse me.
Excellent. I'll just make this very short. So based on sixteen hundred a day, seven days a week, and our population, not including children, because we're still waiting until we have an approved vaccination program for children. And that gives us about one point two million people in Hillsborough County. That's seven hundred and fifty days before everybody in the county would be vaccinated, right?
So at the current rate of vaccine supply, I think that's roughly accurate. The, the supply is going to increase. I'm confident that there will be more vaccines available in the coming months. There are a lot of people working now at the federal level, at the manufacturing level. And the state is really trying its best. I do want to emphasize that. They're trying their best to distribute the vaccine to highly populated areas. We're, we're all hampered by the lack of supply. So they have taken that issue up with the federal government and manufacturers are trying to do everything they can to ramp up supply. I think it was an optimistic projection when it first came out several months ago about the number of vaccines the manufacturers were able to supply. I don't know the details to why they weren't able to meet that target, but I can tell you that we are every day working with the state to try and make sure we identify additional vaccine doses that can be deployed in Hillsborough County.
Thank you very much for that answer because the, the, that's sort of the worst-case scenario. If we can get more vaccine, that's great. But that's why it's critically important that we stay vigilant because it may not happen, you know, in, by the end of March or June that everybody's vaccinated and, and we can go back to quote-unquote "normal." So thank you very much for all your efforts, for staff's efforts and the coordination that's being done with the state. As we, we ramp up the, the volume and availability of the vaccine, I have no doubt between what our staff has done and what the state is doing that we'll, we'll get there. But I, I really wanted to say thank you to all of those that have been working literally twenty-four seven trying to make this happen. Thank you.
And, and just as a reminder, when you bring that up, this, the vaccines are available for those sixty-five and older. We have two hundred thousand people identified in Hillsborough County, sixty-five and older. And even at that rate, we would be talking about three months. So we'll hope that that is ramped up soon. But that's what we're looking at for the interim time here. And now we'll move to Dr. Holt.
Dr. Holt, are you there?
I apologize. Yeah. Yes, good morning again, Commissioners. This is Dr. Holt, Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. I will provide a review of the vaccination plan that is intended to reach the eligible persons in Hillsborough County. I would note that this is not just my plan of the Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. It's been created in coordination with the Hillsborough County staff, Mr. Dudley, and also involved the personal leadership of Bonnie Wise and Greg Horwiddell. I also will provide a consideration or a glimpse of the private health systems plans. As I think Commissioner Smith noted, public health is not the responsibility of a state or the county or the private sector. It's all of us. Besides describing how and where the vaccine that comes into Hillsborough County will be, will go to those who will then give the shots to those that are eligible. I'll also share some insights into the challenges that are faced with giving this particular COVID nineteen vaccine. I do apologize. It's a lot of material. I, I want to be comprehensive. It's lengthy, but I will go as fast as I can. I would ask Mr. Wagner if he could put up my presentation, please. Let's go to the second. So I will review the COVID vaccine, how it, how the decisions are made as to who becomes eligible and who is given the vaccine to provide the shots. We'll also look at our eligible populations in Hillsborough County, how many we have and the ways that we are, they can be vaccinated. I will also describe some of the challenges of administering the COVID vaccine, especially the Pfizer version. We'll look at how many vaccines have been given and a glimpse, beginning glimpse of to whom. We will then look at our local plan that we have, how we would use our vaccine that is allowed, allocated to individual health departments and health officers like myself, same as every other county, can have the discretion of how we would use that vaccine. I will provide some detailed steps on the walkthrough process to administer the targeted vaccine area program initiated by Bonnie Wise. And then I'm going to review how Governor DeSantis is directly directing the vaccine on a statewide basis that does come into Hillsborough County. And lastly, the private health systems, who actually were the first to get it and I predict will become ultimately the primary vaccinators as supply allows. Next slide, please. So Governor DeSantis, each state receives a portion of vaccine that is manufactured and made available to the federal government. It arrives weekly. Really, other than the vaccine that goes to the VA, hospitals, military, Seminole tribes, and the, and the federal program to vaccinate long-term care with the CVS Walgreens, Governor DeSantis has control of the vaccine. He decides who is eligible to be vaccinated and he decides who gets the vaccine to administer to those eligible. We look at the top, this is who is currently eligible based on an executive order issued December twenty-third. All long-term care, long-term facility, care facility residents and staff. This is his top priority. Persons sixty-five years old and older, healthcare personnel that have direct patient contact. And there's a special cavity, category for those that are under sixty-five but have deemed extremely vulnerable to COVID nineteen if they get infected. And that can be determined by hospital providers at this time. If you look at where the Governor DeSantis has directed the vaccine over time, I've tried to sort of display this here in this table. I think it has been well and accurately reported that the amount of vaccine that has come to the states, as Mr. Horwiddell said, has been less than was projected. And whatever the cause, the matter, the, what matters is that the governor has had to adjust over time where he's allocated the vaccine. So if you look at the first week, this was when the Pfizer vaccine became available. There were six pilot hospitals that were identified across the state. Because there were a lot of concerns about the Pfizer and that it requires very complicated transport and storage requirements. Plus, it's challenging to administer. So the state took no chances. They selected six hospitals across the state. Tampa General was selected for the Tampa Bay area. I would note that we are blessed because really any of our major hospitals, whether it was Advent Health in Tampa, Brandon Regional, HCA Bay Care, St. Joe's Maine, and of course Tampa General, would have been capable to receive this vaccine. It then expanded over the next week to all hospitals and also initiated a program in Broward and Pinellas to sort of jumpstart the efforts to vaccinate long-term care in advance of the arrival of CVS and Walgreens. The next two weeks around the end of the holidays, in addition to hospitals, health departments began to receive and also our partners, the federally qualified health centers, Tampa Family and Sun Coast began to receive vaccine. If you'll note, the last two weeks, the predominant vaccine has gone, shifted really from the hospitals into the priorities statewide of the governor. His, the drive-throughs that intended to be stood up in every county, church initiatives and Publix, particularly to serve smaller counties the closest to us is Hillsborough. I think as, as mentioned earlier, Hillsborough County also serves as the warehouse for the Tampa Bay region. We receive vaccine, store and handle it, not only for the vaccine used in Hillsborough County, Pinellas County, but also the, the long-term care initiatives regionally. The next slide, please. So let's begin to look at each of our populations that we're trying to vaccinate in our county. This is the long-term care facility residents and staff. The, I'm very happy and relieved to inform you that all thirty-one of our skilled nursing facilities and our two hundred and sixty-five ALFs have all been visited, contacted and being offered to, to vaccinate any of the residents and staff who wants it. The skilled nursing facilities in our county, this was performed by CVS Walgreens using the federally supplied vaccine. CVS and Walgreens are also working to reach ALFs. But in addition to that, the governor has initiated a contractor-driven CD Maguire that uses the state vaccine. Again, I want to make it clear the vaccinations are not required. Long-term cares can opt out or they have to opt in, I should say. And then each resident and staff make their choices. Let's look, next slide, please. The sixty-five and older, as noted, this represents approximately over two hundred thousand persons residing in Hillsborough County. Being the largest, it is the most challenging of our governor's first priorities. Since there's three options, initially the county drives-throughs, which is now has just been described as, is run through the state, the University Square Mall. And I think as we've talked about, the targeted vaccine areas that we are doing here locally. The other major delivery is through our healthcare systems focusing on their existing patients and staff. Advent Health, Bay Care, HCA Health, Tampa General, and, and along with their particular outpatient aspects with USF Health, Tampa Family Health Center and Sun Coast Community Health Center. If you look at the overall capacity, our goal ultimately through as a nation has been described as one million doses a day. If you look at that from a proportional standpoint, we need to achieve about twenty-five thousand doses administered a day. The healthcare systems, as I will describe a little later, actually have a tremendous amount of capacity that with vaccine, I do believe we can accomplish that goal. Next slide. Next or finally is our healthcare personnel that have direct patient contact, really focusing on those that are not employed or affiliated with a health system. We have seventy thousand, seventy thousand licensed healthcare professionals whose address is in Hillsborough County. I've broken down the descriptions into these categories. About ten thousand providers, whether it's a physician, MDO, nurse practitioner, PA or midwife. We have forty-seven thousand six hundred two registered nurses, LPNs, and certified nurse nurse dentist, dentist, almost four thousand dentists and hygienists and over four thousand pharmacy or pharmacy techs. Again, we're focused on the non-affiliated because the, those that are employed or have a practice with the health systems have been the focus of the health systems in the earlier or side. But despite that, the health systems are also providing that. In fact, just sharing experience, I happened to have a doctor's appointment yesterday. My physician told me that she had been vaccinated by Tampa General because she's on staff while she was called by, her, her office was called by HCA Memorial and their staff was vaccinated. So that combination is going on across the county as well. But in addition to that, we're working again with our county partners to look at what's called closed points of distribution where essentially we would hold an event, reach out to providers such as dentist, home health, hemodialysis workers and others to hold an event where we could do five hundred or more in a day. And then lastly, we've chosen to, to partner with some community providers. If we can give them the vaccine and they're willing to commit the resources, staff and space and everything else to vaccinate their colleagues, we want to get the vaccine in their hands. Next slide, please. Okay, it really is important to sort of put together, I think, the challenges of giving the vaccine. I think the cumulative effect of all this is it takes about twice as long to vacci- is it takes about twice as long to vaccinate with COVID-19 than it is to administer a flu shot. And the very front end is the handling of the vaccine. These are what they call delicate, temperature-sensitive, but also more complicated to administer. In this county, at least from the public sector with the drive-throughs and the vaccines that my county, us, our county locally have discretion over, we are exclusively a Pfizer vaccinator. But Moderna is the other. They each have to be stored frozen. Moderna is essentially a normal freezer. But as everybody, I think, has well heard, the Pfizer requires ultra-cold temperatures. Once you thaw them, they have a limited lifespan. Moderna is 30 days, but the Pfizer, the clock is ticking at five days. And once you open up the vial, either to draw out the first dose with the Moderna or you mix it with the diluent for Pfizer, you have a matter of hours to administer the doses in that vial, or it goes to waste. As a multi-dose, they don't come in pre-filled syringes. You have to take the time to withdraw them individually for administration. So therefore, the bottom line with all of this is that Pfizer's really can be best used and almost only used by large facilities that can store it or providers that if given a vaccine within a week can use it promptly, quickly, and for a lot of people. I would say a minimum of 50, but up to 100 doses per day over that five-day lifespan. The Moderna goes to generally some of the outpatient clinics, like our FQHCs, and are now into the publics and the small areas because of that. So that's sort of the challenges and the distribution of the vaccines. The next one is what it takes to actually put the vaccine in someone's arm. In Florida, there's a licensed staff that are required, can be only approved to mix and administer. Those without supervision are our nurses, nurse practitioners, our physicians, DOs, paramedics, and pharmacists. Under supervision is our certified nurse assistants, LPNs, medical assistants, and even physician assistants. Once you get it in, you need the staff that have access and know how to do the data entry into Florida shots. This is a statewide system, and the goal is to get it in with 24 hours. Because if the state doesn't see that you're using the vaccine, you're provided, you're at risk to not getting more. Because Mr. Horwitz mentioned, I think on the future upcoming is two in particular, AstraZeneca and a Johnson &amp; Johnson type of preparation. These are very different in how they are. They work the same in the sense that they create immunity to the spike protein, but how that is generated in this one, instead of the messenger RNA, Pfizer and Moderna, these genes are actually put into a virus that cannot replicate inside a human, introduce it into the body, and the human produces the immunity. These are stable in both refrigeration, normal freezers, much longer lifespan, and the goal of Johnson &amp; Johnson is it provides immunity with one dose. Next slide, please. Let's look at how we're doing so far. This is as of January 16th. So the top table looks at the cumulative number of vaccines that have been entered into Florida shots and registered that were administered weekly. And I think as you can see in the last two weeks, we've doubled each of the last two weeks. And my hope is we will continue to see that increase, although that does require more vaccine. So we look at again over the vaccinated cumulative numbers approaching, little dated, 49,000. And if you look at the percentage of the eligible, which is a combination of our 65 and elders, and it's about 4%. Looking closer, it's interesting. A bit of an assumption, but if you look at the over 65, those that have received at least the first dose now represent about 11%. And at the 16 to 64, if we make the assumption that they're all healthcare personnel and all 140, the 70,000 licensed, and I'm estimating about 70,000 others using therefore that 140,000, we've actually vaccinated about 14%. These are not precise, but they're the best estimates that I can provide. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's now look at each of our locally, how we will use the vaccine that we can direct locally, the ones that we have discretion over. So other two populations that we're focused on, the 65 and older, generally, we're more focused on those that are not patients of a healthcare system. So we're looking at the targeted vaccine areas. These examples are congregate senior living facilities, faith-based communities, some of our minorities, retirement communities. And also, we are providing a vaccine to medical providers that have access to a large number of employees. Example of that is USF Clinic. We're also partnering, just announced yesterday with Tampa General, so that we give them the vaccine, they can vaccinate employees of the school district that are over 65, including our charter schools. The other group that we're focused on, of course, is the community healthcare personnel not affiliated. Again, we have two methods. One that we have provided or we're providing the vaccine to some medical partners, highlighting two, these Pfizer-capable and have been willing to commit the local resources. One is a group practice, Infectious Services Associates of Tampa Bay, who has the expertise in that they're a vaccine provider for travel shots, connected with the Florida Physicians Alliance. It's a group of about 170 practices. And the medical association are referring patients, but mostly colleagues, to get vaccinated, their staff. We'd like to highlight the Judeo-Christian Clinic, which I think has a long history of service to this community. They received a smaller amount, but were successfully able to vaccinate almost 150 in a week with their vaccine. So I would, on the closed points of distribution, I think I'd already mentioned, I do like to share a comment that I've heard from all those that we have directly partnered with by providing vaccine or indirectly. Hospitals, our Tampa Family, Sun Coast Partners, our community physician, paramedics, and our own staff is just the emotional reward and professional satisfaction they have received when they vaccinate someone. The patients are very relieved, very appreciative. And in fact, a frequent quote that's been, I've heard, is they're thanking their vaccinators for saving their life. Next slide, please. I want to describe a little bit in detail about how the targeted vaccination area program works. Again, this is a brainchild of Bonnie Wise's. The selection of the targeted populations starts with some we know or identify, and others that are upon request. Currently, the county aging services has taken the lead. Amazing person that I recently met, probably well-known to many of you, Tracy G., is sort of leading this effort here. And also, the county notably has dedicated a person to refer churches into the state program, which the governor has prioritized. The next and critical step with each of these populations that we partner with is what I would refer to as a host coordinator. They actually do quite a bit. They create an invitation list to those that are eligible and within their community. They need to collect the information to preload into Florida shots. This is demographic, and they put it into an Excel file for us to electronically upload. What this does is it allows us to generate individual consent forms so that when we arrive at the facility, everyone has their individual form ready to complete and sign, speeding up perhaps the biggest delay in the whole program. They also provide a location that's suitable for a check-in area of vaccination and an observation area for at least 15 minutes. Our vet planners then schedule. They collect the information from the host coordinator. And examples of this are, again, county aging services and my own staff. Once it's scheduled, a vaccination team arrives. This is a minimal number. There's four medical and four clerical. The four medical are two vaccinators and two mixers. And with the preparation, as I described above, they can do 200 doses in four hours. Our vaccinators have been comprised of our paramedics from Hillsborough County Fire, Tampa Fire, my own health department staff, but also significant volunteers from USF, Hillsborough Community College, and Medical Reserve Corps. And then finally, not most critically, but we're going to keep our vaccine coming to our community is to get the data into Florida shots. Below is just some of the basic information. That's all we need when we schedule. The date, the name, date of birth, address, and phone number, email, race and ethnicity is optional. Next slide, please. Let's look at now what's going on. In addition, is the distribution plan that is for the state vaccine, the governor, where he directs the vaccine to go. As I think we've talked about, he has a contractor that is making the rounds to all ALFs, residents and staff in the state. The drive-throughs, this is the most recent and will probably be the top priority to receive supply for at least next week's. Each county is standing up a vaccination drive-through. The University Square Mall is one of the early ones. And what's different a little bit is in addition to supplying the vaccine, they are providing some of the support for it. I would note, as I think was mentioned, the county is providing significant support as well in the support staff for the vaccination. It began today, and I think the estimate to target is described cumulatively. The vaccine we have received this week to administer is 11,700 doses. They're proposing, or discussing early on, a second drive-through that would be stood up. This one, we would get the vaccine from the state, but we would need to locally make it run. And that's all going to be dependent on the vaccine. The state has church initiatives. And as I mentioned earlier, public pharmacies are beginning to be utilized, especially in other parts of the state. Next slide. This is a distribution plan that, again, early on, was a recipient of vaccines, and that's our healthcare systems. Besides vaccinating their own healthcare personnel, they are also joining the effort for 65 and older, focusing on their existing patients and staff, which they have direct contact with. They have information. Their system can make appointments and administer the vaccine in their medical home or a designated area. And as I mentioned earlier, they are also working to reach out for healthcare personnel that initially were affiliated, but now also the non-affiliated with their systems. Really do have a very robust and efficient system to schedule persons, vaccinate, and enter the data. And as listed, the six that have received and I anticipate will continue to receive as vaccine is made available in this community. Ultimately, when there is a widespread amount, it will begin to filter into the individual practices and certainly our pharmacies. Last and final slide, please. So just some highlights. You know, again, I apologize for the lengthy presentation. Supply is critical. It is, we're all dependent on how much that comes into Florida and is Hillsborough County. And we do expect more, but it has been, our expectations have not been realized. Governor DeSantis will be the one who decides, who can be vaccinated, but also who can receive the vaccine to give the vaccine. Locally, we're focusing, just a reminder, we are a Pfizer-exclusive in our local. And so we're working with people in situations where we can use Pfizer. And our priority is right now our targeted vaccine areas and the associated populations and providers. Our real goal is to get out of the business when there's widespread supply that allows vaccines to be available and could be just like getting a flu shot at really where the public prefers, in the local pharmacies and their personal medical office. For the next few weeks, my major, all of our concerns that receive the vaccine is how we move forward with the need to do the second doses. So as we had started ours about three weeks ago, our second doses will become due. We have received vaccine for that. The first two weeks that we did our drive-throughs subsequently, it will be something we will watch very closely. With that, I will stop and be available for questions.
Thank you. At this time, my screen keeps changing. Okay, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized. I think we do have to move through this a little faster, though, but.
Thank you. I just, I want to thank Dr. Hold and the entire team. I asked this to be brought forward today as the comprehensive analysis of our plan and to help our citizens understand how we were deploying and know what our opportunities and limitations were. And I really, truly appreciate the in-depth report that Dr. Hold, as well as Mr. Horwitz, actually provided us. And I look forward to hearing the communications plan on how we get that information out. But I just want to thank the entire team for helping us see not only how big this project is, but how thoughtful we have been in terms of developing a great strategy for protecting our citizens. And I just wanted to say thank you. I'll stop there.
And we'll move to, I don't see anyone else. We'll move to Ms. Lopez now.
And good morning, commissioners. For the benefit of the public, my name is Leana Lopez, and I serve as the Chief Communications Administrator. It's my pleasure to share that communications and digital media continues to maintain and execute a strategic communications plan that has included multiple full-scale campaigns since the start of the pandemic mitigation efforts. Since the first case of COVID-19 was reported in our region last year, Hillsborough County Communications has been working tirelessly alongside our partners in emergency management and the Florida Department of Health in Hillsborough County. We're also actively engaged with our peers in neighboring counties, cities, hospital systems, and public and private agencies through the Joint Information Center, known as JIC, that launched last March. We've worked together to develop public education and information campaigns that seek to encourage safety as well as healthy habits among our residents. Most recently, we were focused on our local vaccine distribution efforts, and our communication strategy was submitted to you, which included an overview of our communication efforts. That strategy has been our path forward since December. Now, we've moved into a supportive role to amplify the joint state and county effort. While the recent developments this week related to the state distribution site may have shifted our role in the specific communications effort, our team remains very much engaged as we have a great responsibility to the residents we serve. Through all emergency response communications efforts and at the center of our emergency and vaccine communication efforts, the team strives to protect and help ensure the safety of the residents of Hillsborough County, present timely, accurate, and relevant information, protect the county's reputation and maintain public confidence, and monitor information disseminated through the various media channels and correct any misinformation very early in the process. in the process. While the state is now the lead agency on the vaccine distribution site, the county remains dedicated to providing quality public information and the communications and digital media department will continue to support the state in providing timely, relevant, and accurate information to the residents of Hillsborough County. We're committed to maintaining open lines of communication with our peers at the state level to ensure proper coordination of messaging and will continue to support the efforts through the successful implementation and execution of various tactics and messaging across our platforms and channels. Sometimes it seems like we're moving a little slowly, but we have to coordinate with our partners and make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed because we bear a significant responsibility when communicating with the public we serve. Another area we plan to continue to highlight and support is the education outreach efforts to the most at-risk populations in our community. In fact, we're currently working with DOH Hillsborough to develop a Facebook Live series that will feature medical experts to specifically address vaccine-related concerns of our local Hispanic and African-American residents. Additionally, our team will continue to promote and support the outreach efforts of emergency management in DOH Hillsborough as they continue the targeted vaccine area initiative throughout our community. We remain committed to consistently implementing communication strategies and developing supporting materials that align with the goals and priorities outlined by emergency management and EOC Command to include the Department of Health public information efforts as well as the efforts of our partners, including the state. We recognize there is a potential for message fatigue and there, there can be latency when receiving these messages. Therefore, we continually adjust and look for new ways to connect with the public we serve by refreshing our campaigns and targeted outreach efforts to help drive the behavior we seek. As I previously stated, our communications campaigns and tactics are crafted through the lens of transparency, the lens of equity, and includes fact-based, data-driven strategies. We remain steadfast in our dedication to open and transparent communication and will continue to provide information that is accurate as we know our citizens look to us as a resource. As a reminder to the public, appointments are mandatory, no walk-ups will be accepted, and appointment eligibility is restricted to age 65 and older and frontline healthcare workers at the site at this time. To request an appointment, please call 1-866-200-3896. And that concludes my update at this time, and I am available for questions.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank the COVID presenters for giving us an award-winning presentation as an update on COVID-19. You continue to give unimaginable efforts and beyond to meet the needs of our citizens. And I just personally want to thank all of those who being, who are involved. I do have one question. Let me go back. And it might be addressed, in the presentation, we are, you show where we are serving those who are between the ages of 16 and 64. Do we know that when we would start being able to announce that to others? Because I've been receiving many calls of persons between that age group that want to receive the COVID shot.
Commissioner, I may address this. This is Dr. Holt. Currently, the 16 and 64 really would need to be a healthcare provider with direct patient contact. That can be office staff or others. It doesn't necessarily have to be the medical person in that setting. There are, as I mentioned, a way that for hospital providers to identify those that have high medical risk, but it's really a, it's a very specific carve-out at this time. I do not know when the governor would change and expand the eligibility beyond those three categories that I recognized at the beginning. So it will happen, I just don't know when.
And lastly, I'd just like to say, I am just so happy to, on behalf of my church, Great Baptist Missionary Baptist Church, to be one of the host sites on Sunday with the church initiative in partnership with the county and the state. We're looking to serve 600 people on Sunday. And so I'd just personally like to say thank you again.
Thank you. And seeing no further comments on our questions, oops, did I miss anybody? At this time, it looks like we're okay. So seeing no further, do we have the, is it the county attorney, is this present for the extension of the emergency?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Christine Beck, County Attorney. At your last meeting in January, we were directed.
Is your mic on? I don't think it is.
It's showing it's on. Yeah, okay. Is that better? Okay, I'll get closer. Yes, at your last meeting, we were directed to prepare a draft order for the board's consideration that quote, "extends the mask requirements to include any outside area where a bar or restaurant is permitted to serve alcohol or food." And we have done that. It is part of your backup in your materials. There's a red line as well as a clean copy. And at this time, happy to be available for any questions.
And seeing, oops, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Beck, for that summary. As you, as you saw on your backup, there have been some actually minor changes to the ordinance that is already in place. We already have in place an ordinance that requires mask-wearing and social distancing in general. We also have adopted mask-wearing and social distancing as well as some other limitations that we adopted in December. What we found is that we had failed to address that it is very difficult to social distance when, when you're permitted to take your mask off, which is typically when you're eating and drinking. So I've asked the, our legal staff to take a look at the language to allow some consistency for not only our business owners, but also our citizens in what to expect when they, when they go out in public to eat and drink. So what comes ahead of you is a document that addresses several things. One, what we've heard is it's going to be a while before the general population under the age of 65 is going to have access to vaccine. And so with that, and the fact that we are at a peak at the highest level since we've gotten started addressing this pandemic, although it's come down in the last seven days, it's still, we're at much higher level than we were when we actually had stay-at-homes or the bars were closed or we had a mask order in place. So it is important for us to take a look at ways that we can set a minimum standard that, that consumers and citizens expect in order to allow them to still participate in our economy, but also be able to protect their health as they interface and go along about their daily lives. So this amendment is a targeted amendment that addresses that loophole associated with eating and drinking. For too long, we've allowed the bars and restaurants and those that serve food to pack in as, as maskless folks. And consequently, our numbers are at levels that are not safe. But if you want to eat and drink at one of these establishments, you're allowed to take your mask off, but then you actually now with our current, if only inside, you're required to have, to take a seat. And this is how all of our, a lot of our establishments have been operating for quite some time. And those that we heard, for example, for our public commenter earlier today, that participate in the Safe and Sound Initiative where businesses are looking to do business, save their businesses, stay open, and provide a safe environment for their customers and their employees, they are, have already adopted what we are, what is being proposed in this language. Outdoor, they're, they are asking people to be seated while they're served and asking them to be seated in, in, when they are allowed to remove their masks for eating and drinking. So this will not shut businesses down. This will not stop parties for the Super Bowl. This will just allow people to be safe when they are in a position to remove their masks for eating and drinking. And so I'll, I'll note that this is also limited to any outdoor area of a bar or restaurant that serves food. Doesn't impact if you're at a park or, you know, or anywhere else. It's in a place where we have offered an exemption for taking a mask off that, that allows you to eat and drink, where you could very possibly either spread the virus if you're not aware that you are actually exposed to it, or where you could protect yourself otherwise by wearing a mask. And this gives those individuals, even in outdoor environment, that frequently where social distancing is still very difficult to maintain, which is the recommendation by the CDC to permit those businesses to stay open and actually adhere to safe practices. So with that, I'll move the approval of, of the document in the backup material that's being proposed to the board. Second. Second.
And a second. Do we have Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you again, Commissioner Overman, for doing some of this heavy lifting to refine, and having the political courage to do some heavy lifting to refine our ordinance to protect our citizens. I think there's been some misunderstanding about what is before us today. It is a very, and you did a good job explaining it, Commissioner Overman, but it, just to highlight, it's a very targeted tweak of what we already had done, what many bar and restaurant owners already are doing. But it, it, it just applies to bars and restaurants and only if you're not socially distanced. So, you know, if you are a bar and restaurant and you are serving food and people are removing their masks outside in, in places that can't be socially distanced from other people outside their family group, then this offers you the tools to point to a sign on your door or, or at your establishment that says, hey, this is not my rule. If you're going to be mad about it, it's the county's rule. And, and that gives them some cover. In my runs through my neighborhood, I noticed that a restaurant in my neighborhood, their poster and, and places I've seen, it makes a point of saying, this isn't our rule, this is the county's rule. And that makes it easier for them to, to explain to customers that everybody's required to do this. Don't bother having an argument with me today. This has, so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to support this, especially in, in light of the statistics we've seen today. We have seen some improvement, but we are a long way from out of the woods. Our statistics are still very scary and, and it'll be a while that, that we're going to be dealing with this. So whatever we can do to keep our community spread down within our community, to keep it from getting out of hand and overloading our hospitals anymore, to keep it from impacting our schools and other populations, I am happy to support. I want to point out that as politicized as this issue has become, it, it really is, is not at the heart a political issue, it's a public safety and health issue. In fact, the, the White House Coronavirus Task Force, which was led up until yesterday by Vice President Mike Pence, last, they put out a weekly report, and their report last week, under Vice President Mike Pence, has nothing to do with change in administration or, or, you know, one party or another. They put out a weekly report with recommendations for each state. And in this past week, that committee reported that Florida's situation is dire because Florida is facing surging cases, surging deaths, threatening to overwhelm hospitals, and because Florida is dealing with the more contagious mutation of the virus. This federal report said, quote, "aggressive mitigation must be used to match the more aggressive virus." And it said that without uniform implementation of effective face masking and strict physical distancing, the epidemic could quickly worsen. Talking about Florida, again, led by Mike Pence, all right? This federal report said that Florida must increase both statewide and local public medication and increase communication on the importance of things like avoiding family gatherings. And of course, it recommends vaccinating people as quickly as possible. So, you know, this is not some fringe group. It's, it's not an email from the incoming administration. It's a report targeted to our state saying, we need to put in place aggressive mitigation, including effective face masking. And, and so to that end, I support this, this move. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments brief because I made them known at the last meeting when this was first brought up, but I just cannot support it. Our small businesses have just been put through too much, and I just think as a policy, this would be overkill.
Thank you. And I'm looking to see if there's, Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to state after hearing the various reports this morning, in particular from our code department, how they have gone out to educate over 2,000 businesses that are in very good compliance with what we've asked them to do inside and outside and to put another, to add to the ordinance in place today. It's just a little bit unfair when they are working with us as a partner. And I think that's what we are missing. They are working with county staff who continues to educate them about COVID-19, and they are doing the right thing. So I'd just like to share those comments with us. It was, we listened to the staff this morning from our code department. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you. I've given this a lot of thought during the two weeks since it came up, and I just think that applying this outdoors takes it a step too far. I, I think that it's going to undermine our message if we're viewed as continuing to expand it beyond the original scope. I've been totally in support of this mandate at every step of the way indoors. But I think that for those that are questioning the efficacy of that, this is going to actually undermine our overall message. And I recognize that it's well-intentioned. I think reasonable people can differ on this, but I, I think that the enforcement issues that relate to this are just going to be difficult, and I would really prefer to leave the ordinance alone the way it is. I think that we've got to trust people to react to the education that we have been giving them about how important it is to wear a mask and maintain social distance, but I just don't want to take the step of having a further mandate that applies outdoors. I think it, it, it may have the opposite effect of undermining our credibility on the entire program.
Thank you. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I, and I do appreciate the comments that are made, and I do appreciate code enforcement's educational program. They've gone out and helped people understand the changes that were made back in December to help people realize that seated while served was important. And yes, the ones, the, our team went out and helped people understand that that was the standard way of operating so that we mitigated its community spread. We have found that businesses were, in many cases, were already doing that, and that's really great. And, but setting that, setting that minimum standard revealed that there was an issue associated with outdoor service for those businesses that were either not informed or not willing to participate in the effort to minimize community spread. And so. And so to, to address Commissioner Myers' comment, yes, they're going out and they're educating our businesses on our current language that requires people to be seated while served when they're indoors. They have not included education on this particular measure, that it would be wise to be seated when served, even outdoors. And so while I do appreciate that that is not currently part of our rule, and it is only affected bars and restaurants, if this item were to fail, I'd like to come back with a follow-up motion.
Okay, Commissioner Overman, the only thing I wonder about is, it looks like the numbers are here definitely in that it, it won't, you know, sustain. I'm just wondering if you would like to withdraw, make your follow-up motion?
Sure, sure. Thank you very much for the opportunity, given that it appears as though this would not pass. And given that we, our businesses that, that have, let's say, for example, done the safe and sound pledge, that are already adopting this, I'd like to ask our legal team, would it be possible to, to make the outdoor seating while served a recommendation rather than a mandate, so that we could advise those of the dangers of serving food and alcohol without being able to manage the social distancing and make a recommendation that people be seated when served, even outdoors?
Yes, Commissioner Overman, that is something that we've seen in both our orders and others. The way you would word it is simply to say that we strongly encourage this behavior or these practices in order to keep people safe, and we can easily revise the language to take out the mandate. Of course, then there's no penalties associated, it's just a strong encouragement, but we can absolutely do that if that's the board's direction.
With that being said, I'd like to put a motion forward that we modify our current ordinance to include strongly encourage seated while served when served, when at our bars and restaurants when food and alcohol is being served.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And Commissioner Myers, is your hand up on this?
Yes.
Okay, you're recognized.
But, but not on the motion. I'd just like to, for the record, had a conversation yesterday with ACA Dexter Barge, and he assured me that on the educational piece, they are talking to businesses indoor and outdoors, because that was a specific question I asked him on yesterday. So we are serving the businesses right now, indoor and outdoor, about the educational piece of wearing their mask. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized?
So just for clarification, what you're, what this motion is, is to essentially leave the ordinance alone, however, add a provision strongly urging or recommending that people be seated while served outdoors and also maintain appropriate social distancing, and if not, be masked when they're outdoors, but that's a, a recommendation, not a mandate?
That is my understanding, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I see no other, I don't, hands went down and then they went up, and so, Commissioner Myers?
No.
Okay, I'm not sure why that occurred exactly, but I'd just like to thank also Commissioner Overman for all the work you've done on this. I know you care very deeply about it, really looked at it hard. I think it was wise to do it as a recommendation, because I think that that, and the Safe and Sound Program and what they're doing, I think, is saving lives. And, you know, just discussing this and thinking about this and putting this forward, I think, will be another benefit, saving lives. As we've all pointed out, there's been unbelievably nearly 25,000 people in the state of Florida that have now died of COVID-19, 1,200 people in Hillsborough County, and we're reaching a, a peak that it doesn't appear that we've reached yet. So anything we can do, especially as the Super Bowl comes, I think, to make people aware, who may be coming from other places and don't understand, you know, at least some, some of the, even being close in proximity outside, we don't know, you know, so caution about that. So with that said, I, I don't see any further comments, and we can take a roll call vote.
I just want to make sure, this is amending the language for eating and drinking at a restaurant or bar establishment for the, strongly encourage for the outdoor area. This is not changing the previous language, it's only to address service for the outdoor area where the business is allowed to serve alcohol and food.
Yes, Commissioner, that's how I understood it.
Okay, and with that, we will do a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and White voted no.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Actually-
I'm sorry, we do the emergency, sorry.
Yes, that's right, we just have one more small matter of business. You also have a draft order in your backup, that is the order extending the local state of emergency for your consideration, and it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion with regard to that extension.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I heard, I thought a second, Commissioner Cohen, and who's seconded? Commissioner Overman's waving her hands, that might be the way to do it. So with that, Commissioner Cohen made the motion, Commissioner Overman seconded, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
All righty, we have a few items still to get through. Item B four is a procurement item, and Scott Stromer will discuss the CDR McGuire contract.
Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B four is a report of an emergency procurement, which upon recommendation from the Office of Emergency Management, county administrator approved the emergency purchase of urgent vaccination appointment scheduling, testing and related services for 30 days from CDR McGuire Incorporated in the amount of $3,659,300. This initial award amount was estimated based on the Office of Emergency Management's best understanding of the state of Florida's projected vaccine rollout. Subsequent to the county administrator's approval, the Office of Emergency Management determined that an additional $1,829,100 will likely be necessary to provide the required services during the initial 30 days. The Office of Emergency Management presently estimates that a minimum of three additional months of service from CDR McGuire will be necessary while alternative service delivery firms and methods are evaluated. Therefore, authorization is further requested to increase and extend the emergency purchase order up to $21,953,600 for a total of four months. Resulting award is a requirements-based award, therefore the expenditure funds will depend solely on actual usage of the specified services, and the county is only obligated to pay for services that are actually performed. Like all requirements-based awards, no payments are ever made in advance of the services being provided, invoiced, verified, and approved. Any increases to the requested award amount will require additional board approval. Additionally, following the transition of CDR McGuire, this item also requests authorization to formally terminate the award to Onsite Screenings LLC for testing and vaccination services, which was approved by the board on December 16th, 2020, upon recommendation by staff. The emergency procurement services from CDR McGuire will replace in its entirety the award to onsite for testing and vaccination services, which was in the amount of just under $14 million for a six-month period. Also canceled was a separate emergency purchase order for additional appointment scheduling services from onsite in the amount of $112,825 for a two-month period, which were not included in the original testing and vaccination scope and award. As described by staff earlier, the Office of Emergency Management key stakeholders determined it to be in the county's best operational interest to consolidate and secure vaccination, testing, and appointment scheduling services from one, with one firm with the necessary qualifications and capacity for a community of our size. The Office of Emergency Management key stakeholders evaluated the operational need and several available service delivery options, and ultimately decided and identified CDR McGuire as the firm that was most capable and available to quickly stand up the, the desired operation and the required scale and level of customer service. Again, as described earlier by staff, the Office of Emergency Management is currently working to identify longer-term service solutions, which may or may not involve the delivery of services by others, state of Florida, private healthcare providers, commercial networks, et cetera. The emergency procurement of the subject services did comply with procurement policy, therefore the Procurement Services Department does recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner White. And do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
I think Commissioner Myers is trying to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Myers.
I'd just like to mention for the small business onsite screening LLC, if there are any additional opportunities that the county can work with this small minority vendor, to please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other comments, Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item F two, which is to receive a presentation on the county's LEED certification, and we have representatives from the citizens and communities platinum, for the platinum award from USGBC. And then we also have staff here, Tom Fass and Sheila McNamara, to present this item.
Thank you. So, and I will just give a little introduction to this, and I have to say, I'm just so proud of our county and of county staff on this, and just for a little teeny bit of history, in 2017, I was on the board of December 2016, but in 2017, one of the first things I did was speak to Mr. Merrill about getting a sustainability director, and we might have been one of the first places around to do such. And at that time, Sheila McNamara was hired, I think it may still be part of what she does, but we have, I think there's been a culture of sustainability by some departments, and it's really grown in leaps and bounds, and we've really expanded. And in recognition of some of that work, and I just am so proud that we have gotten this, we were awarded a platinum award for leadership in, in, in energy and environmental design, LEED award, as many of you know, by the U.S. Green Council Building, Green Building Council. And how, this is, the platinum is very, extremely rare. In fact, only three counties in the entire United States have given, been given a platinum award, one in California, one in Virginia, and we're the only one in Florida. And so that is saying something. For a while, I've been meeting with our staff, many members and EPC members, and as they went through so many sustainability initiatives in so many different directions, and I'd just like to recognize all of them for the great job they're doing in putting this forward, Greg Hordell, Sheila McNamara, Tom Fass, John Mueller, George Cassidy, and also from the EPC, who's been part of this effort, Janet Doherty and Michelle Jenkins, and I'm just hoping that, I haven't missed too many people, I know there's a lot of other people working in all different areas, coming up with great things that they can do to increase our efficiency, to save our taxpayer dollars, and then we have our great benefit of cleaning up our air and our greenhouse gases and our water and everything else. So it's, it's really quite all-encompassing. Sustainability takes in nearly every aspect of what we do, and we might not be thinking about, and I could go on with a long list, but just to name a few, energy, of which it's still little known, that we have our, that we put aside $5 million that we bonded out for energy efficiency, much of it in solar panels to our libraries, that program is still moving on, and we have many libraries that now have solar panels, our wastewater, our water, our waste, our landfills, our recycling, our fleet, our land use, our extension services. I mean, it is just set from right down to the small restaurant that's in this building doing recyclable cups and, and packaging for us to take out. So it's an amazing effort, and I've often thought that we, people don't really understand how incredible it is, everything that we're doing. So at this point, we're going to introduce, I believe, Sheila McNamara, Tom Fass, and John Mueller, but Sheila, I know, worked very hard on putting together this presentation to just show you some of what the county is doing and why we were recognized with a platinum award.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Okay, Sheila, why don't we let Mahesh go ahead and present the award, and then you can give the presentation?
Yes. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to introduce Mahesh Ramajyan, I'm sorry, Mahesh, I'm sure I did not pronounce that exactly correctly. He is the president and CEO of the U.S. Green Building Council, and he wanted to present this prestigious award to the board himself. Just to provide a little background, the leadership in energy and environmental design program, commonly known as LEED, has become the most widely used green building certification program in the world. In 2019, the U.S. Green Building Council evolved from focusing on materials and buildings only to including people and raising their quality of life through looking at communities as a whole. The U.S. Green Building Council has over 176 participating counties and nearly 200 cities and communities across the globe using LEED for cities and communities to communicate continuous performance. Now Hillsborough County is among them, and the first in Florida. Mahesh?
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Commissioners, and of course, thank you, Tom. It's a pleasure for me to join all of you. In this meeting, I won the most prestigious platinum plaque, and I think Sheila touched on a couple of important points there about our history, but I'm sorry, I couldn't be there in person to do it, it is much more fun when we do it in person, but regardless, I'll take advantage of this moment. Very quickly, you know, UGBC was established 20-plus years ago with the goal of creating LEED, leadership in energy and environmental design, a universally agreed upon holistic system for reducing environmental impact and providing a quality indoor environment for all, always the goal of reducing carbon emissions, addressing climate-related risk, and improving human health and wellness, how timely this could be. And today, we have more than 103,000 registered and certified LEED commercial projects, these are buildings and spaces, 2 million plus registered and certified residential units in 181 countries, and about 205,000 plus LEED professionals are developing, contributing, and implementing the LEED rating system around the world. And as Commissioner Overman stated, behavior matters, and this is why we have been helping the building sector change their design, construction, and operational practices to support the people who occupy these buildings. So through this LEED for cities and communities program, we are not only addressing these isolated projects, even though they are 103,000, but they're still scattered around, but the cities and communities that they belong to, and, and we want to make sure that the transformation happens at every possible scale. So this is our effort to accelerate change and really deliver sustainability, health and wellness, resilience, and equity to the marketplace. And as a LEED community, Hillsborough County has joined a growing and operational practices to support the people who occupy these buildings. So through this LEED for Cities and Communities program, we are not only addressing these isolated projects, even though they are 103,000, but they're still scattered around, but the cities and communities that they belong to. And we want to make sure that the transformation happens at every possible scale. So this is our effort to accelerate change and really deliver sustainability, health and wellness, resilience, and equity to the marketplace. And as a LEED community, Hillsborough County has joined a growing cohort of nearly 200 sustainable communities around the world. And importantly, I want to underscore this today, the Hillsborough County is the first county in Florida, and only the third in the U.S., as Commissioner Kemp pointed out, to achieve Platinum certification in the Cities and Communities Program. It is indeed a high bar to achieve. And this achievement is a recognition of your hard work and commitment to saving more than $3.5 million annually from reduced energy costs, eliminating 120,000 tons of carbon dioxide emissions since 2003 through the use of recycled materials in building construction, putting solar panels on county facilities, and installing LED traffic signals, and preventing more than 65,000 acres of natural lands through the Hillsborough County's Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program. As was evident from this morning's presentation and the numbers presented by Mr. Wagner, measurement is a big part of this county. Our theory is this: what gets measured gets done, what gets done gets improved, and what gets improved gets replicated. So by implementing practical and measurable strategies to improve sustainability, we're also making a positive impact on the health, prosperity, and standard of living for the 1.3 million people who call Hillsborough County home. So thank you to Commissioner Patty Kemp and the rest of all the Board of Commissioners for your leadership, the county staff, volunteers, county residents, and everyone who are providing healthy people, who are proving healthy people in healthy places equals a healthy economy. So we can't wait to partner with you on your next big bold move, whatever that may be. Congratulations again, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you again, Mahesh, for the award and for the assistance provided by the U.S. Green Building Council staff. Next slide, please.
Stand by one second.
Sheila, while we're waiting for the slides, you may want to recognize Vatsal and the assistance that he provided us, too.
Yes, I would like to say a special thank you to Vatsal Bahat. He has worked with us since the beginning of the process, and he is our local representative, well, he's actually in New York, but he is our representative to work with us on going through the LEED for Cities and Communities certification. Do you need me to try and show it from here?
I haven't seen it, I believe.
Yeah, it's up, Sheila.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so Commissioners, again, my name is Sheila McNamara. I'm the Sustainability Manager, and I have the honor of presenting to you today about the activities that were used for evaluation in this process. If you look at the next slide, please look at the performance wheel on the left of the slide. We received an overall score of 83 out of 100 possible points based on the five different performance categories. The next slides, go ahead, please, will give you an idea of the diversity and breadth of activities by county departments under each category. Under the energy category, that's the one that we scored highest in, and for good reason, because Hillsborough County has a long history of energy conservation activities. Our downtown chiller plant has been visited and used as model by other municipalities, and most recently by Water Street. Using this technology has saved the county millions of dollars, and for this reason, an additional chiller plant was constructed at the Falkenburg Jail, Falkenburg Road Jail location. The county has also been conducting extensive solar installations, as Commissioner Kemp referenced, with bond money, as well as LED lighting retrofits, both within our facilities and also at our sportsplex complexes. Also, going back over a decade ago, Public Works began converting traffic lights to LEDs, resulting in an average savings of 48%. Next slide, please. Our county Public Utilities and Water Resources Department is recognized as a national leader for several of their programs, including the SHARP program, which creates a saltwater intrusion barrier, and also for having one of the largest reclaimed water systems in the country, treating wastewater to 90% better than the rest of the country. The county's Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program, ELAP, is the largest in the state, with now approximately 65,000 acres. We are very grateful to the Board for acknowledging the value of environmentally sensitive lands and wetlands preservation for flood protection, climate regulation, biodiversity, and air pollution removal. Next slide, please. Under the waste category, in addition to providing curbside recycling collection and other programs Public Works has in place, the county also outsources trash hauling, and our vendors are enhancing their fleets to use alternative fuels and have already converted by 60%. The photo in the bottom-left shows the county's co-composting initiative between Public Utilities and Public Works, which not only diverts waste from the landfill, but also converts two waste products into a valuable soil amendment. And the photo in the upper-right of the slide shows our Resource Recovery Waste-to-Energy Facility, which converts trash to energy used to power county facilities and further diverts waste from our landfill while also recovering valuable metals. Next, please. Under transportation, the county continuously works to add safety and sustainability enhancements to transportation activities with roadway improvements, bike paths, crossing paths, trails, roundabouts, and more. As displayed in the picture on the bottom-right, we're also utilizing solar and LED lighting with battery backup, and those are called power outage emergency beacons, to provide power immediately during outages to help with the safety of our community members and visitors. Next, please. This human experience category, performance category, looked at human needs and overall quality of life aspects. Hillsborough County offers a myriad of programs and services for public health, safety, education, recreation, arts, historic preservation, culture, and much more, with new programs and services continuously being developed to respond to the wants and the needs of our community members. In the upper-left is the picture of the construction of new net-zero affordable homes, which assist our people, our environment, and our economy. Next, please. Well, achieving the LEED Platinum Award is a great testament to the years of sustainability activities that Hillsborough County has already put in place. The certification process helped us to identify our strengths, but also opportunities for continued improvement. And to build on those successes, we're working to develop the sustainability action plans that you see here, as well as additional greenhouse gas reduction strategies. Next, please. Towards that end, we developed an extensive community outreach program with the help of USF's Florida Center for Community Design and Research. Engaging our community members, citizens, business owners, and multiple organizations is an essential part of the sustainability planning process in order to create a shared vision with realistic and achievable goals, and we've received very valuable ideas and opinions to help staff with planning. Next, please. Commissioners, the goal is to bring the two sustainability action plans and the greenhouse reduction strategies back to the Board in the summer of 2021. These plans will identify goals, recommended conservation and reduction activities, and resources needed. Next, please. While conducting the community engagement activities, community members expressed that they wanted to learn more about how to live sustainably. The county offers many programs to help with that, starting with our SELF program, our annual SUN Solar Co-op, and of course, our Cooperative Extension Services offers numerous programs and classes related to sustainable lifestyle and behavior and activity changes. Lastly, go to the last slide, please. Again, I just would like to emphasize that this was a major team effort, and it crossed multiple departments. We're grateful for everyone's support and participation, and we're very proud in the county achieving LEED Platinum. That concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And I don't know, I don't, sorry, my screen disappears every time there's a presentation, so I can't, it doesn't look like there's any further comments. And with that, I know we don't actually have to accept this presentation, I guess it is. Okay, we'll just move on then. And thank you so much for that presentation. Again, I'm very, very proud of all the work we've done in so many areas, and I think we walk the walk, not just put out goals or that we don't meet and talk about that. So we are doing great, great things across the county in this area, and I really wanted an opportunity to highlight that and let the new Commissioners know, but also everyone know about all our efforts. Thank you. And Ms. Wise will...
Thank you. The next item, Commissioners, is Commissioner Kemp's item, item F1, asking staff to reinstate and bring back information regarding the Tampa Bay passenger ferry. Commissioner Kemp, your item.
Thank you. As you all know on this board, I've long supported creating a robust ferry service for Tampa Bay. This item is about the creation of a commuter ferry service from South Hillsborough County to MacDill Air Force Base. The idea is to purchase four boats and develop sites at each end of the route to provide daily commuter service. Many of you have taken the cross-bay ferry between downtown Tampa and downtown St. Pete. If you haven't, I'd recommend you do. It's a great trip, which is a spin-off of this greater effort with HMS ferries. We've been borrowing a boat from up north for three winters, and this will be the third one. It was funded by five different jurisdictions for three years, including Pinellas County, St. Petersburg, Tampa, Hillsborough, and FDOT. Despite the limitations of just one boat, this project has been overwhelmingly successful. It just has way beyond anything that was ever intended or predicted. And the program will end this April. There's no, nothing set aside for future years at this point. The South County to MacDill Ferry Plan will create a permanent year-round ferry service both for the new commuter route and the evening and weekend trips between South Hillsborough and both downtowns. Having four boats would create significantly a more robust schedule, and it would provide a desperately-needed premium transit option for South Hillsborough County. The number-one difficulty over time has been locating a suitable waterfront site for a ferry terminal in South Hillsborough County. We studied a number of sites. In the summer of 2019, we received an incredible offer, and I'm still deeply grateful for that, of waterfront land. It was just, so it's been so difficult going through this. The incredible offer of waterfront land for Mosaic that meets our needs. In fact, it was, it was better than anything else that we had located in terms of ridership and expectations. So I'm asking the staff at this time to put up an image of the map that shows the site. Proximity to MacDill to provide rapid ferry service and is connected to Big Ben Road. It's an excellent location. It makes sense, and it's available. I can tell you that I just met with Mosaic again, and with Mr. Hordell, and they say that the offer, which was included in your packets that was made at that time, is still there for us to continue talking about and considering. So now I'm asking staff to put up another image in particular of the site Mosaic has offered. That's it. And at the time this idea came up in 2019, the Board decided to ask Heart, we finally had this, this land as a possibility, and the Board decided to ask Heart to look at the project. For a number of reasons, Heart's consideration was delayed. Heart had its own issues at the time, as many of you might know. The Board of Directors from Heart, finally, of Heart, finally considered a ferry project at its August 3, 2020 board meeting. The Heart Board endorsed the ferry project as a premium fixed guideway transit project and recommended that Hillsborough County proceed with the next phase of the partnership agreement and the development of the project. In fact, it was overwhelmingly endorsed by the Heart Board. The Heart Board offered continuing technical assistance and pledged to work with the county on all future stages. We should fully assess the proposed Mosaic-Big Ben site as a South County ferry terminal site and develop the terms and conditions of a second interim agreement for subsequent board consideration. The county would also obtain the benefits of funds already invested and the efforts already expended, which have been substantial in terms of all the work that's been done to further the development of this project. We're not committing to anything today other than bringing back the options for the Board's consideration. So with that, I'm going to virtually pass the gavel to Vice Chair Overman, and here's my motion. I want to direct staff and the county attorney's office to prepare the appropriate documentation for future consideration of, by the Board to reinstate the Tampa Bay Ferry, Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry interim public-private partnership agreement with HMS Ferries and Southwell Development Group LLC, as previously amended, in order to further extend the agreement to adequately assess the proposed Mosaic-Big Ben site as the South County Ferry Terminal site, and develop the terms and conditions of a second interim agreement for subsequent board consideration. Ms. Commissioner?
I can see, I can't, I can see hands, so are there any questions? I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make, but I want to make sure everybody else is addressed first. With that, I'd just like to offer a couple of comments, but also questions. I see in the, actually, I have seen these plans over the whatever, 11 years or whatever we've been doing this, or however long we've been doing this. And there's been various different modifications of the original agreement. There's been various different modifications of the site. There's been a variety of different understandings of who's, who's on first, who does what and how. And then, of course, having Mosaic offer us this terminal site added another element of opportunity to consider. And so while I have always thought that it made total sense to utilize our waterways to add a fixed guideway, or what's classified a fixed guideway transit option, especially for those that are, that would serve our largest employer in Hillsborough County, that's our MacDill Air Force Base, I've always been a great proponent of this particular program. I also recognize that, you know, kind of where we are, what will work now. And, and I'm constantly asking myself that question when considering items that we are looking at, whether I like it or not. You know, if I want, you know, everything in the store, what am I, what, what can I actually do now to make that happen? And, and in this particular case, we have to recognize where we are. So while I'm very interested in the actual project and like to see it move forward, I'm not clear on what existing agreements would bind our hands if we assume or reinstate previous agreements. So I, and we also have a lot of, a lot of issues and unknowns. We still don't have a certex. We still don't have any funds for doing a transit investment. We are, we have a workshop scheduled next week to show the deficit in funding we have for our road transportation network. That is significant. And, and we have a lot of unknowns about what we can and can't do, given we haven't gotten a resolution from the Supreme Court at this point, and what our timeline would look like to even consider being added, you know, adding a new... to even consider being added, you know, adding another transit option beyond what we have with an agency with Hart that is so underfunded, it has difficulties delivering its mandate of offering robust transit service to the citizens of our municipalities as well as our county. So I'm a little concerned about the timing of this, not to say I'm not interested in a ferry project, because I would love to see our waterways used, it makes sense. But there's a lot of unknowns in what we would be doing here. So I'm a little concerned about supporting this today, whereas I would be very interested once we have an understanding of what is possible, given the shortfall we have in the area of transportation funding, as well as no direction from the Supreme Court on any funds that would help support the development of this particular project. That being said, I see hands raised, and I don't know who raised their hand first. I see Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Cohen have their hands raised. Can someone on the floor let me know who went first?
I'm not sure.
Commissioner Cohen was pointing at me, so I guess I'll go first. And I'll be brief. We've been discussing this project for eight or nine years now, and it's been on life support for the last several years. With the exception of Commissioner Miller, I want to say that most of the commissioners during this time have either supported the ferry conceptually, or at least gave the project ample opportunity to prove its value. I want to point out that I was an early supporter of the ferry project from the very beginning when I first heard the presentation as a member of TIBARDA. I was intrigued by this transit option that would utilize our waterways and take cars off of our overstressed streets. At the time, I felt that along with developing our downtown, this would allow us to better compete with our peer cities and ultimately take Tampa, Hillsborough County, and our region to the next level. In fact, years later, it was my motion that set aside funding for the PDNE study. However, year after year, the project scope would change and the associated costs would increase, resulting in 10 or 11 modifications to the agreement. With that, and the fact that this is a transit project, the board ultimately voted to send this project to Hart, since that's our transit agency, and they're better equipped to manage the process and allow this project to compete with other transit projects. Now, I know Hart does not have the money, but with billions of unfunded transportation needs, neither do we. Here's the bottom line. According to our most recent consultants' report, we're looking at spending upward of $36 million for 750 riders a day. That's not even cars, that's people, twice a day for 1,500 trips. Yes, the investment is much smaller than most transit projects. However, when you consider the cost for the minimal ridership, it simply does not make sound financial sense. If we had 36 million to spend, I'm pretty sure the argument could be made that the money would be better invested in other transit options that would drastically improve ridership and frequency. That's why The Times Editorial Board in 2019 said this would be a costly project with little public benefit that is entirely in the wrong hands, referencing to the county managing the process. We're, again, eight years into this discussion, and yet significant unknowns remain truly making this a house of cards. To continue down this path is simply throwing good money after bad at a time when we can least afford it. So with all of our unfunded needs, I cannot in good conscience support moving forward. Lastly, as Commissioner Overman stated, we do have an upcoming workshop where we will discuss our transportation priorities. We do not have an identifiable funding source. We're still waiting for the, to see what happens with the sales tax referendum. So I know that there are commissioners who are still inclined to give this project a lifeline. I would just suggest that tabling this until after our upcoming transportation workshop and until we see what happens with the sales tax referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you. So as a relative newcomer on the board, along with Commissioner Myers, you know, I haven't had the benefit of the many years of discussion of this project. What I do know, however, is that we have crises looming on many fronts. We do have a fiscal crisis in terms of our unfunded transportation needs, but we also have an infrastructure crisis, particularly in South County and in South Tampa, where the congestion is becoming increasingly unbearable. I don't know about the specifics of this project, although one of the things I was going to suggest was that if this was going to come back in some form, that we ask for some new analysis based on the new site and based on representations that have been made about the overall commitment being $2.4 million over the next three years. I'm very interested to understand how that intersects with the 36 million that Commissioner Hagan referenced earlier. I also want to know exactly where the funding would come from if we were to go forward with this project. What would be the funding source? I know there's uncertainty related to the fate of the SRTAX, but whether or not this comes from the unincorporated county fund or the full county fund, how exactly this would work is still unclear to me. I also am unclear about MacDill's level of interest and what it would actually mean for them to participate. And I guess where I'm going with all of this is that I don't want, even though this has been discussed for years, I don't want this discussion to end today. I want the discussion to continue. If this is something that is workable, it's liable to take us many years to figure it out. The idea, however, that a ferry can't work in this environment doesn't make sense to me, because it works in all sorts of other places. And let's face it, the water is free right of way. Commissioner Kemp has said that in the past. The project is not free. The project is certainly not free, and the terminals won't be free, and it appears that some of the sites won't be free either. But I am inclined to want to go along with where Kimberly Overman was moving this discussion a moment ago. Keeping it alive, recognizing that over the next few weeks, we have a lot more information related to transportation infrastructure that's going to be coming to us, and maybe simultaneously asking the county to do some additional work here just to evaluate the new site, the actual cost that's required of us over the next few years, and then to integrate that with the discussions that we're going to have coming up related to our, both our transportation network, but also, I think, the fate of the sales tax. At some point, the Supreme Court has to rule, and at some point, we have to have some guidance as to what our fiscal situation looks like. So for me, I just, I want to keep this conversation alive. I just think it's premature for this person that is brand-new to kill a proposal, an idea, that has been so long in discussion and could, could, make a real difference for our residents in South County and our residents in South Tampa who bear the brunt of this traffic that is, you know, I know that here our focus is very often on the infrastructure and congestion in South County, but, you know, city council in Tampa is considering whether to have a moratorium on development around MacDill Air Force Base because of the traffic issues that exist there. So I just think that we've got to keep this on the table as an option, even if for the next few weeks or months, there's some uncertainty as to whether we can go forward or not.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I agree completely with Commissioner Cohen's mindset, his statement, and understand, those are great questions he's asking. The item before us today is to direct staff to bring back something that will allow us to consider whether to go forward in the next phase of project development that is the 2.4 million over three years, during which we will do the design, engineering, environmental assessments, and permitting, down to designing the boats. So there's, that next stage, over the next three years for that 2.4 million, is where all these nuts and bolts questions will be answered. And I completely agree that, you know, we need to move forward to allow these questions to be answered now that we have a new site and now that we have the support of Hart Board, but with the understanding that they are not the agency that's going to be able to do this phase of it. And so I hope everybody will support moving this forward. It is not just for MacDill, although that will, as Commissioner Cohen noted, and Commissioner Overman is an important component of this, but the nights and weekends service expansion that's been included in this ferry plan that goes beyond the current Tampa to St. Pete weekend service, then the nights and weekends will serve South County residents and Tampa and St. Pete residents with boats going like this in routes to bring citizens from Sun City Center to this downtown Tampa for an evening, and people from St. Pete to downtown Tampa, and people from Tampa to, conceivably, to South County eventually. So there is quite a lot to this that is worth fleshing out, answering the questions, digging into the engineering and design details, and we'll never get those questions answered if we don't follow up on the considerable investment that this county and the vendor has made in our contracts with them and give us time to, and the authority to move forward with the vendor, looking into these questions and answering them and moving forward on the next step of the way. So I hope we can get board support just for this small step forward today.
Okay, I have, Commissioner Myers has her hand up, and I see Commissioner Kemp wants to also speak. So Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. My concern is I'm in favor of reinstating this particular project for the ferry, but at the same time, we have before us the workshop, and I do agree with most of the comments that have already been said, next week. What I would not like to see right now is that we go out and spend some funds in talking with the developer or one of the partners until we can hear and know what we have as it relates to funding in the county for my transportation workshop next week. That's just the best part of all of this. With the workshop coming, I move that staff bring this back at the second board meeting in February to give us the opportunity to have the workshop and allow staff to do the research that we were talking about this morning and to come back on February the 17th, I believe.
I'll second that.
Substitute motion that you're offering?
In fact, I guess I could just, because we have the other motion that I made, but I didn't hear a second, but I'm assuming that Commissioner Smith...
Cohen second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Right, I know. No, I'm talking about the original motion.
The motion was, Commissioner Kemp made the motion, Commissioner Smith was the second of the original motion.
So, and...
Is Commissioner Myers offering a substitute motion with a second from Commissioner Cohen?
I think she's offering an amendment to add to it, but I could just add that, I'm sorry I didn't put a date in there, but I think February 17th or as soon as practical after that date that something is ready would be appropriate, in case the staff cannot prepare it by then.
Would that give staff enough time to come back at the February 17 meeting?
I think I'm trying to make sure that I understand, is this to evaluate funding sources, or is this to prepare the document?
Evaluate funding sources from the workshop, the transportation workshop.
We could do our best to get there, yes.
Okay, so I'm confused whether, I assume that that was an amendment for a date to move this forward.
It ties into...
You'd like to add that to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Or the February 17th.
Okay, so I...
Commissioner Myers is offering an amendment to Commissioner, or, yeah, not a substitute, but an amendment to Commissioner Kemp's motion to bring back a recommendation after the workshop to address the reinstatement of the Passenger Ferry Public Partnership Agreement with HMS Ferries. Is that correct?
Yes. Did you, but I didn't hear the date.
I think it was the second week of February, their second meeting in February, whatever that date is. I think it is the 17th, that is correct. And Commissioner Cohen seconded it?
That's correct.
With that, I do have a question, because I do see Myers and Cohen's hands still raised, so I wasn't sure if that was from before. With that, I have a question. If we're only considering the financials, I would assume that that would also take into consideration the legal aspects and responsibilities in the previous agreement that was put together. So while we're putting off addressing the financials, are we also including an analysis of the current agreement that needs to be reinstated, or are we looking at the project as a whole to see who's on first, who does what? And so if you could clarify that for me, that would be helpful. County administrators' hands raised, and then I'll call on Commissioner Kemp.
I just wanted to say the original motion is still there, which would do all the other things that you just asked about. Adding to the original motion.
Okay, so let's do this. Can I hear the substitute motion, please, or the amended motion, please?
And I'm sorry, I have raised my hand on behalf of County Attorney Beck, because...
Yeah, I'm having an issue with the hand, but if I, may I ask a question just to clarify? Madam Vice Chair?
Go ahead.
My only question, and just because I'm a little confused at what the direction is, I couldn't tell if the amendment or the substitute by Commissioner Myers was simply to wait until after the transportation workshop and have staff evaluate the funding sources and then discuss this again, or whether it was to actually direct us to go and negotiate the second interim agreement, which is part of the motion by Commissioner Kemp. So that's a kind of a critical thing to know what we're voting on.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I've got some background noise that's causing a delay in the process. So the amended motion includes the financials after the workshop, and the original motion addresses not only the financials, but also any contractual requirements that would be necessary to allow the project for consideration by the board, and we would have that done by the 17th. Is that accurate reflection of what has been discussed?
Point of order, Ms. Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair?
You're recognized.
To Ms. Beck's point, I understood Commissioner Myers' motion to be a motion to postpone to a time certain, to a certain time, rather, which in our rules of order is a subsidiary motion that stands on its own. So I would like clarification on that, if I may. Commissioner Myers, is your, is your motion to just take this item and just not act on it at all today and just defer it to February 17th and address it at that time?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So if I may, as a point of order, Madam Vice Chair, that would be a subsidiary motion that stands on its own. That's a motion to postpone to a certain time with that time being the February 17th B O C C meeting.
Excellent observation. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. And may I ask the, from our county administration, given that that motion would require a date certain of February 17th, is there a plan for a workshop between then and now, and would it be possible to address and meet that goal for the 17th?
What I said is that we would truly do our best. We will evaluate the funding sources and see what we can do by then, so we will make a commitment to do our best to bring it back at that point in time.
Excellent. Now, I, before I take the vote on this, no, okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. So I appreciate the sentiment, Commissioner Myers, but what I'm, what I think, if you wanted to withdraw that specific, and we could just move and add your concerns into this original motion, so that we could move ahead with this original motion and do some exploring, none of this, that we, none of my motion will cost a cent today, nothing can cost a penny until it brings back anyway. And that could certainly be part of the discussion at that time. I would, I'd ask you to withdraw that motion, but I could restate a motion and ask to include that and that it be brought back after, excuse me, we get that information. Also, to your concerns and points, and I don't want to get too deep, because this is, this is not spending one cent. This is simply exploring and bringing it back. And I think that that is probably, you know, and your questions will be addressed at that point to a greater extent. If they're not at that time, then we can postpone or go back to get more information. But I would urge, just in terms of that, because, you know, it's time really to move ahead on this. We've lost time. It takes, it's probably going to take another 24 months to kind of do the permitting, the engineering, the design that we need preliminarily done. Just to let you all know, if you're not, for when you're not familiar, a single roadway quite frequently has a two- or three-year timeline for P D and E and costs $3 to $5 million. It's, it's just par for the course that happens. This is actually de minimis, but we're not taught, I mean, is, is, it's right on target for what is typically done. And just, just to, just not to let a few things linger out there, I just would like Commissioner Cohen, just, but we'll hear more about this when it comes back. But I will tell you that McDill, I've met with them several times, they have this identified as a prime project, the Tampa Chamber of Commerce, Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce has been in for two years, asking me anything they could do to move this ahead. And one of the things that they said is that they met with McDill and said, what is your number-one priority that we can help you with? And McDill said, it's this, it's the ferry. And you're totally right. South Tampa is suffering tremendously with the issues around transportation around McDill as well as South County in so many ways. And this project has been, you know, Commissioner Hagan made, you know, talked about different things that have happened with this project. Several of them have been that Commissioner Hagan has made motions, throwing additional requirements out there, three, four ferries, four ferries instead of three to do the service in between Tampa and St. Pete. It's been changed, there's been the site. So this is really just to move this along so we can get the information that we need, not one cent from my motion would be spent here today. It would just allow this to get back on the table again, get us the information, answer the questions, hear from the public, start to know. And if you're not comfortable with it at that point, and you don't have the answers to your questions with regards to budgeting or anything else, it can be, it can be raised at that point, but with the concern, you know, that you can express that, you know, that's something that you would like to know about as, when it's coming back.
And thank you for your explanation, because I do have a lot of uncertainties. You know, we mentioned McDill. Do we have a letter? I know everyone is talking with McDill and all, but when it comes to an agreement and working together, you need to access documents to make sure the players that we say will be there. Hart has changed, hasn't changed its position, but we have a new executive director from Hart. We're waiting to hear what the Supreme Court is going to say. So all I'm asking in the process, so since we're not spending any money, but we have a workshop next week, am I correct? We have a workshop next week. So still with the 17th, it allows us to hear in this workshop before we say, and we're coming back on the 17th, if that's the case, of next month, then we have a better position of how we want to do this. Before we go give anyone any thoughts, I've been in this boardroom to talk about the ferry, to support the ferry, but looking at all the information before me that I received as a new county commissioner, and I have to add my good friend Commissioner Cohen, and it says, it allows us the opportunity to receive more information just before we decide to say, and it's a good project, don't get me wrong, but it's going to cost the county. And that's what we need to know before we go all the step farther from the workshop next week. I'd just like to know, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Myers, do you want to have your motion stand, and then we can move forward on this? With that...
Can I have one more comment?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers, if you withdraw your motion, I will ask to restate my motion and make sure that it doesn't come back before February 17th. Okay. So I think, I think...
Could not hear the conversation in the room. So what was decided?
Think that she has agreed to withdraw her motion, and I would like to restate my motion to add to it.
Just a moment, please, just a moment, please. I have not heard Commissioner Myers say that. So Commissioner...
Let me hear what you're proposing.
Okay, here's...
Thank you.
I'll go back to this. "To direct staff and the county attorney's office to prepare the appropriate documentation for future consideration," this is not one cent spent, "by the board to reinstate," at that time, we're going to figure out about anything, you know, the particulars, "to reinstate the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Interim Public-Private Partnership Agreement with HMS Ferries and Southwell Development Group as previously amended, in order to further extend the agreement to adequately assess the proposed Mosaic Big Bend site as the South County Ferry Terminal Site, and develop the terms and conditions," that's when we find out about the financing and the terms and conditions, "of a second interim agreement for board consideration after February 17th or after, as soon as possible." That would be what I would state my motion to be.
Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Smith, is that includes your second with the modification she's made to her original motion?
Yes.
Okay. With that, Commissioner Kemp has made a motion. Commissioner Smith has seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Chair, it's chair.
I guess I'll take it back again. And with that, thank you, thank you to everyone for your support, and we'll, we'll look at what, what is moving forward here. We'll hear a lot more about this, I guarantee you, and your concerns. And with that, I think we're, Ms. Wise?
Yes, the next item are future discussion items.
Great. And do we have...
I have one.
Sure. Commissioner White, I'm sorry, and I'll get you too, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my understanding that staff is working on an ordinance dealing with apprenticeship programs and apprenticeship requirements that was requested back in December. I would just like to state for the record, as a future issue, that I'd like to see the proposed ordinance model the Palm Beach County program. And if this is not already the direction that staff is heading in, I'd like to ask that a draft ordinance that models the Palm Beach County program be presented together with whatever staff has worked on side by side, so that the board can review both and discuss both. So, and again, I just say that as a future issue. I know it's something that staff's already working on, but I'd like to see that as the package that's brought back to the board.
Thank you. And Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. To Commissioner White's point on the apprentice program, staff is working very hard. We have our, pretty much our 85% plan in place to bring back to this board on February the 17th. And so let's see what our own staff has come up with to promote a wonderful, award-winning apprentice program called ACE. Thank you. Now let me continue.
Sure, you're recognized, yeah.
This past Monday, we exert, the nation observed the MLK holiday, and in talking with one of my sisters on Sunday, she was telling me she was putting out her trash. And I told her there was no pickup in the county on Monday because it was a holiday. Well, coming to find out, our solid waste department worked on Monday, on King's holiday, and our vendor to collect trash. And we know that that is a national holiday, and so I'm going to ask our county administrator going forward that there is no staff working on MLK Day as long as Hillsborough County government isn't existing. Dr. King went to Memphis to meet with the sanitation workers for a strike the day that he was, the day before he was killed. So it's real important to me and all of us in this boardroom and the people that are listening, we must commemorate the legacy of Dr. King, that no one in Hillsborough County is working on a King holiday. So I asked staff to find another day in the week to work to pick up trash then on a King holiday. And thank you so much, Madam Chairman, County Administrator, Bonnie Wise.
Thank you. And I don't see, I don't think, any, anyone else with any future items? Thank you, and thank you for raising that point, Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further items, we stand adjourned.